Good evening. I'm calling this meeting in order. The time is 5:31 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We will now move to our pledge, vision and mission statements, which will be led by our communications team.
Good evening, President Martinez, Superintendent Dr. Molinar, and members of the board. Please stand as we recite the U.S. Pledge, followed by the Texas Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. The vision of the Fort Worth Independent School District is igniting a child, igniting in every child, a passion for learning, and our mission is preparing all students for success in college, career, and community leadership.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear public comment addressing items on the agenda, as well as items of a general nature or topics not specifically listed on the agenda. Let me remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with, one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry; two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry; or three, direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. No presentation may exceed three minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Speakers, when your name is called, approach the podium by going to the back of the room, down the stairs, and coming up the sidewall on your right. As soon as the speaker begins speaking, the time clock will begin. Our first speaker tonight is Christine Stone, followed by Pamela Bennett.
Hello. I'm Chrissy Thummel. I grew up in Channel View, Texas, near Houston. After serving as an intelligence analyst in the Air Force, I moved to the DFW area to start a family and worked as a network engineer for a cellular communications company. I'm currently subbing with the district while I obtain my teaching certification. My children have attended Fort Worth ISD, and I am a taxpayer. I appreciate the efforts of the board and Dr. Molinar to improve student outcomes and hope some of the following -- excuse me -- suggestions will be helpful. Please increase the emphasis on math facts fluency K through 12. Consider recognition programs for those that practice and demonstrate fluency similar to honor roll and summer reading programs. Confirm fluency for students underperforming on MAP, STAR, and benchmarks, and provide daily practice where needed to achieve fluency. Concerning literacy and other subjects, provide parents with full curriculum transparency, lesson plans, lists of sight words, and share the child's assessed reading level. Share map scores. Share map scores, as well as assessments on areas where improvements can be made, and please put those on the parent portal where they'll be easily accessible. Please make playgrounds and district buildings more inclusive and accessible to those with disabilities. Add ramps at entrances and exits. Don't block handicap parking during events, arrivals, or dismissal. Add more inclusive play equipment and safety fencing around playgrounds at all campuses. Consider adding gardening clubs or partnering with local gardening groups and adding board game clubs at schools to enhance inclusion for extracurriculars for those with special needs. Provide safe cardio exercise opportunities to children with special needs in elementary and middle schools, such as running partners, stationary bikes, and rowing machines. Share specific nutritional information and ingredients for school meals with parents. Provide nap time and quiet times for kinder in first grade. Increase unstructured playtime for elementary school students. Encourage paper assignments for elementary and middle school. Train teachers in differentiated learning software, such as how to increase font size and using the copy machines for children with visual impairments. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Pamela Bennett will be followed by Tornisha Lomax.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Bennett, and I am the Family Engagement Specialist at Edward J. Briscoe Elementary. I'm here to talk about tardies and also absences. We have students, majority of our students walk to school. So even on a day that it's raining, they still come to school late. I have documentation of what time we sign them in, because they walk. They wait till it stops raining, and they walk to school. Also with absences, that's a lot of the problem, too, is because it's raining. Even if y'all give them a bus, they're not going to be able, they're not going to stand outside and wait on the bus in the rain. They would not be able to walk to the campuses that y'all are planning on sending us to because it is too far for them to walk after it's raining, so they would not even walk. At least they still come to us, even though the rain has stopped. Some of our students don't sign in until 11, 12 o'clock. I've even had students that came in at 2 o'clock because it stopped raining, and they've only been there an hour, but they still want to come to school. Also, another thing, when Fort Worth ISD sends out a call-out to say that it's going to be bad weather, our parents do walk to school and get their kids. If they go to another campus, some of the parents are not going to be able to walk there for to get their kids, you know, if y'all send out a call-out that the weather's getting bad or not. Also, we have some of the students that come in that have came from doctor's appointments. Their parents still walk them there. Also, it's one thing that is, no matter what time the kid comes there, they're considered tardy, not absent. So, you know, we try to make sure that our students have something to eat, no matter what time they get there. A lot of kids come there because they, like I say, it's rained, they've had doctor's appointments. Most of our kids come to school early, because, like I say, their parents go to work early, so they have to walk themselves to school. So that's the more thing I'm worried about, is the tardiness. They would, it would be more absences than tardies. At least they're tardies by them coming to school when it's raining and everything. It'd be more absences if y'all move them to another school because they won't get up to catch the bus because it's raining or it's too cold, and they would not be able to make it to our, to the campuses that they need to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Tornisha Lomax, followed by Bob Willoughby. And Bob Willoughby will be followed by our final speaker tonight, Stephen Poole.
I got to be honest with you, one of the main reasons I come down here keeps me away from the refrigerator. There's one thing that city council, the school board, and the commissioners' court, well, there's two things city council, school board, and commissioners' court have in common. One is, across the board, you don't answer questions. Now, I know you say you can't hear. That's okay, but you don't have to take it to extremes. You can, after you're out of here, you can email, talk, answer questions. You don't answer questions. That's what you do across the board. And that's, I don't know how this happened, but this is what, this is where it starts at. We need to start teaching kids in schools at an early age. This is why, that's why I'm down here. I was taught this at an early age. When people don't answer questions, don't trust them. That's simple. You don't trust people that don't answer questions. And that's what I got all the way across our system, people that don't answer questions. So I want you to start teaching kids at an early age that when people don't answer questions, something's wrong. Don't trust them. Okay? That's very simple. That's it. And that's, that's what's going on, too, with our new superintendent now, I guess, or the new superintendent. The one before, simply before she was replaced or moved, she did respond. Anytime I had a problem, I could call the superintendent of ISD, and through another channel, something would get done. And that's good. That's good. That's the only time I ever got anything done, because your people weren't answering out there. They'd answer if I called her. The new one's not answering either. I asked, I sent a letter to her, I called them. I said, "Look, I've got a suit against a school. I think you ought to settle out. It shows you're losing money. Schools aren't opening. There's money needed. It's costing you more to carry this on. It's wrong. It's totally wrong. You're just fine because you don't want to take responsibility. All mistake. That's a mistake." But you know what? No answer from the new superintendent. At least the other one did. There again, no answer. You know? And then when I was down here a few days ago with the grievance, one of the people I talked to, his grievance was, he wasn't getting no answer about his kids, some of them at the school, and I meant to tell him, "Well, you don't answer either, so I don't know why you're down here." But that is the key thing. You don't respond. You don't answer. And the other thing you have in common with the council and the commissioners' court in here, well, the mayor and council don't like me, the school board don't like me, and the commissioners' court's getting there. They don't like me either. Have a good day.
Thank you, Stephen Poole.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Action Item L. That's the board policy to implement the statewide cellphone ban. I'm not naive enough to know that even amongst this room, if we use this as a sample, there's going to be varying opinions on whether it's a good policy the state set for us or a bad policy, whether students should have it on them, shut off, in their pocket, in the bags. You're going to get a lot of mixed messages. But your board policy implements the statewide ban, and it checks all the boxes of what's required in state law. You have to adopt a policy. You have to adopt the consequences, so you're changing the student code of conduct, Action Item Q, to have the consequences there. But teachers and principals are going to be the front line of this policy, and there's going to be a pushback from students and parents. Will they have your support in implementation of this policy? Because it changes the student code of conduct, and teachers for years have told you that the student code of conduct hasn't been routinely followed at their campus, and disruptive students are allowed to interrupt the school environment, the classroom environment, which is a violation of the student code of conduct. Superintendent even created a committee based on student behavior expectations. Don't know what came of that committee, because nothing changed in the student code of conduct. So it leads a lot of people to question, who's going to have their back when they start confiscating cellphones, turning them into the office, when students and parents start pushing back on this policy? Because you set the expectation for the schools. We get the kind of schools that you want. So is this something where the schools, along with the student code of conduct, will be supported by the school board? Thank you.
Thank you. One final call for Tornisha Lomax.
Good evening, school board. Thank you so much for allowing us the time to come here and to speak. First, I want to just say I am super excited for what is going to be happening this next year. I love that we have adopted the Blue Bonnet curriculum. I love that we are putting emphasis on literacy and on math skills. I think that goes to show with schools like Briscoe, who I am here representing today. And I know that it has already been slated to close. So I am proposing an idea, and why don't we keep it open? As a leadership academy, I think that Briscoe could do a lot of good. We need that in that part of the community. I do feel that it was unfair for all 18 schools to be put on one roster to be voted on, instead of voted for individually. We were already counted out before we even had a chance. If we have schools like Briscoe, De Zavala, coming here, every school board meeting, advocating, talking to newspapers, doing what we can, getting attendance up, making sure that we have a roster full of teachers who are TIA-recognized, we're doing everything that we can. We have support for the community. It is part of a historic area of Fort Worth. We would hate to see that closed. That would be detrimental for our students, for our parents, and for our faculty and staff. Right now, we have some parents who are saying they're not going to send their child to school, no matter if a truancy officer comes, no matter the consequences. If Briscoe closes, that is detrimental to so many of our young minds. As we know, the children are our future, so let's give them a helping hand, instead of taking away something that is helping them right now. If this is another socioeconomic deterrent, why add it? Why keep that as something that's going to cause more harm to the community as good than good? Of course, we understand there are financial obligations that you guys have to uphold because of things that have happened in the past, and that's not all the way on you guys. We have a new superintendent. We have a new deputy superintendent, so we know that you guys came in when it was really tough, and you guys had a tough hand. But please, let's not see that translated into our communities, especially communities that are serving, whether it's during the school year, during the summer, during spring break, where we're giving out food, clothing, access to other resources that help so many of our parents and students. We have many that live in the hotels, so this would really cause more harm than good. Please do consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing your thoughts this evening. Next, we're going to move on to agenda reports. First report is Public Notice of Federal Grant Applications Submitted Between April 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. Are there any comments or questions from any of the trustees concerning the Public Notice of Federal Grant Applications Submitted Between April 1st through June 30th, 2025? Seeing none, we'll move on to Board Committee Report. Are there any comments or questions from any of the trustees concerning the Board Committee Report? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. It's the superintendent report, and I will turn it over to Dr. Molinar.
Thank you, President Martinez and trustees. This evening's report is going to be a little different. We've been doing a lot of data coming in with our summited data for STAR. Tonight, we're really going to be focusing on some updates and preparing for the 25-26 school year. I do want to, before we start, make sure we recognize our principals and assistant principals came back and started with us yesterday. I was able to spend the morning with our brand-new principals and assistant principals in a small group, and it was wonderful to welcome our new staff and our new family members. And then today, I was part of about 300. I was part of about 360 APs and principals that are involved and engaged in three days of instructional learning around our new curriculum framework and our new initiatives, really focused on literacy and math. And it was just great to see our principals and APs sitting together and learning together, engaging together. One of the things I did ask them to do was to continue their bold and aggressive leadership around our students and really about their why. I do want to recognize Ms. Bennett and Ms. Lomax from being here today from Dillow. You did exactly what I asked our principals and assistant principals to do this school year, to put our kids first, to be student-centered around every decision and every time we have a discussion when it relates to instruction. So your comments today focused on that, and we do not take those lightly, and we hear you with those concerns. I shared with them today that in preparation for our Leadership Institute retreat, last night, I counted my emails. I had 205 emails that came in yesterday alone. Out of the 205 emails, three emails were solely about students and about going into the new school year. When I make a challenge to our assistant principals and principals and our executive directors and staff, I really focusing on our why around students. We, as a district, have to continue that focus. We have policies tonight that you'll see where we're waiving our first reading to make sure we're aligned with state standards. But then we have some exciting initiatives that we're going to announce this evening that really focus on our students and the, the focus that has to be on literacy and math, and just not throughout the school year, but going into the 26 summertime as well. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to warn you, it's a little long tonight, but it's important information that we need to go over. You're going to see here on the first slide that all of us have been seen in the media, and we have been sharing as well about some funding that has been frozen from federal funding. And I really want to be transparent where we are with that funding. So we're looking just under $10 million of federal funding that has been frozen to us as a school district. So I wanted to share tonight what that means. That really came in our Title II, III, and IV funding, Part A and Part B for Title IV. So under $10 million, and you know, what, how, what's that impact currently to Fort Worth Independent School District? And I'll share that on the next slide. When we talk about it, it means that those are some funds that we have obligated to some programs that meet the needs of our students when we talk about being student-centered, and that we have to pause those contracts currently until we see what is going to happen to our funding, if maybe some of that funding will be released by the federals or the feds, or maybe we'll have to look at how can we fund some of those programs differently with different funding sources. But you know, we already adopted a deficit budget for the 25-26 school year. So we're having to really go back and look at, see what other cuts we can make because, because what is important is that our services are not disrupted to our students. They, these funds, they support various contracts and services, but there's also 88 positions that are currently funded within our district with a little bit of that federal funding. We have others that we've already moved over to our title funding. Those are demonstration teachers, not all of our demonstration teachers, but some of them. We have gone ahead and made that decision to move their FTE funding to different sources. We are looking to, of course, maintain those 88 positions. Those are our current internal employees that we want to make sure that we start the school year with. Also, we have some private nonprofits. We call them PMPs. We're trying to share what those acronyms mean. Those are really pass-through allocation funds that come to Fort Worth Independent School District and go to some private nonprofit. And those are through Region 11. They could be private schools as well as some other services. We've already contacted Region 11. Of course, since we did not receive that funding, we will not be doing those pass-throughs as well. So everyone has been contacted. We did receive great news yesterday, so we do want to celebrate that. Part of the funding that you saw on that first slide for our after-school program, that's our 21st Century Community Learning Centers, in the amount of 1.7 million, we did receive that funding coming back to our district. So that was announced yesterday. And that is all of our Fort Worth after-school sites that helps fund 1.7. We were already looking to see how we could maintain those open sites. When we talk about our why and being student-centered, they, 70 sites within Fort Worth Independent School District for after-school that serves our students in elementary, middle, and some actually high schools as well. So we now are able to keep those sites open and make sure that we're ready to receive our students. Our plan of action is, of course, to look at all the positions. If we have vacant positions that are currently funded through the funding that has been frozen, we're not filling those positions as well. We're going to review all the contracts and make determinations as needed to see how we can continue some services and where we need to maybe look at where we need to be more efficient and trim some of those contracts. Any carryover funds will be shifted to Title I. So we are able to continue initiatives similar to our demonstration teachers, which we have shared in prior board meetings, the importance of our demonstration teachers, working with our students half a day and then working with our adults, with really building capacity around our new instructional framework as well as working in our professional learning communities. And we have notified everyone that has been impacted with the frozen funding. And I'm saying frozen because it's always our hope that it becomes unfrozen. We're able to go ahead and put some of those services back in place immediately. The next slides that you're going to hear about is really around legislation updates. As we have closed the session, we now are starting the implementation phases of our legislation updates. Mr. Poole did share, one of them is the cellphone policy that we'll cover this evening as well. We have some that we're asking our board of trustees to waive the first reading this evening, and that is really to be in compliance with having a September 1st start date. But more importantly, some of these policies have to be put in place before the first student day, which is August 12. So we're very excited for August 12. But some of these policies, we need to waive the first reading so our board can vote on, so we can implement and make sure that we are, of course, in compliance with any state mandates. You're going to see there are some significant changes to public education through some of these policies that we're adopting and some changes that you'll not only see through our student code of conduct, but then also through processes and procedures that will be impacted, not only on campuses, but in our departments as well. And we'll continue to update them as we get information. You'll see there in the red, we wanted to make sure that we shared with you this evening. We always say TASB. And what is TASB? Well, that's the Texas Association of School Boards. TASB is really who we rely on to help us develop and update our school policies and then help us align our procedures to policies as well. This guidance is really critical when we're looking to stay in compliance, not only with state, but federal law. So TASB has been working very hard to make sure they're guiding districts to updating their policies. And then when we have questions to make sure our policies are aligned locally, we work with TASB and make sure we do any changes. So hopefully that just helps in the future when you see updates on policies and we say they're TASB-recommended. That comes from the Texas Association of School Boards. Our first one we want to talk about, as Mr. Poole shared, was around our cellphone. That was House Bill 1481, and that one goes into effect September 1. And we are asking our board this evening to waive the first reading and adopt the policy that will be put in place. And that policy, just to give you a brief overview, says we must prohibit from using cellphones in all other personal communication devices. And that does include smartwatches while on school, school property during the school day. We also must have disciplinary action measures in place that you'll see in this code of, school code of conduct as well. And we have to confiscate the personal communication devices when we reach the consequences where a student is not in compliance of following this new state law under House Bill 1481. The school board has to adopt a policy that prohibits the student, or they're allowed for the students to bring the device to school, but it has to be stored away. This is the Fort Worth Independent Schools approach, that we will be adopting the policy. However, we will be allowing the devices to come to campus, but they must be stored away during school hours and during our instructional school time. Some questions have come, like, why are you even allowing the students to bring them to campus? We do have students who come before school, before school hours. They're participating in activities. They are waiting. Some of our parents drop our students off before our school hours. We want to make sure that our parents still have that form of communication with their students. Some of our students stay after school for some events, or they're walking home as well. And they do not have, of course, a parent with them. And we want to make sure if a parent chooses to allow them to have their cellphone, that they do have that for safety feature after school hours. So we, we understand our parents' concerns as well as, you know, some of our own concerns, because we do not have staff on duty before school hours. And we, but we do sometimes have students on our campuses waiting for those school doors to open. So we do not want to take a safety feature of a cellphone from them. However, we will implement the state law under House Bill 1481, and the, the device must not be brought out during the school day and during school hours. So when we have our parents who are upset about this state law that has been implemented, we understand. But you need to know our approach for Fort Worth ISD is to protect our instructional time, however, to still give you the access to your student before and after school hours as well. I do, the last bullet does show there are exceptions in students' IEPs, 504 plans, as well as directives from physicians. And then we're also working with TCC as well, our early college high schools, as well as some of our PTEC programs. They do have a device that they sometimes need to use other than their laptop. So we are working through all of these different processes. We will not get this right the first day, the first six weeks. This is, of course, a new, very different process that we have to put in place for our schools. And just like Mr. Poole shared, we will need to work with consistency. Part of the training that our principals and assistant principals are engaging in this week is around consistency of implementation around new policies that are being put in place this year as well. UIL participation is another one we're asking our board to waive the first reading. This really is around Senate Bill 401, and this is about needing to take action before September 1. There is a new law that now requires our school board to adopt a policy. If we are not going to allow students not enrolled in Fort Worth Independent School District to participate in UIL activities, our board would have to approve, would have to have a policy that opts out of that requirement. We are asking our board this evening to not allow any student that does not attend a Fort Worth ISD campus to participate in UIL activities. This is just not athletics. This is also fine arts as well. So we are asking our board to waive that first reading tonight and approve the second reading for this new policy, allowing, not allowing our non-enrolled school participation in Fort Worth ISD. If you're enrolled in Fort Worth ISD, of course, we want you to participate. However, even if you live within Fort Worth ISD, but you have chosen to go to a charter school, a private school, or be homeschool, we will not, we're asking our board not to allow them to participate in those activities. Our coaches, our teachers really have schedules that are just not before and after school. There is a lot of activities that take place during school around our fine arts and our athletic periods, where students need to be part of that daily programming and participation. For students not enrolled in our campuses, that is really not possible for having them fully engaged in participating in those UIL activities. Library books. Here's another one. This one we are talking about today. This has, the board must take action to approve this policy before the first day of school. This is Senate Bill 13. This policy has to require the board to approve all library materials that's been donated or that has been procured by a school library in our district. And we have to have recommendations, of course, through the school library advisory council if decided to create. And we'll get that to the next slide and share with you. Our list has to be public, and we have to review the list of any library books that are procured and voted on for our district 30 days in advance. And then there has to be a approve or reject list at an open meeting, school board meeting. We also have to make sure we're in compliance with the new library book collection standards that is outlined in Senate Bill 13. The school board may establish a local school board advisory council to assist in the district in ensuring that the local community values and reflects the school library catalog. Our local, our Fort Worth ISD Board Policy Committee, that is made up of four of our school board members, have already decided that our school board will establish a local school board advisory council. And we will be rolling out the process and the procedures to establish that library council, council that will help select any books that before procurement and that are brought to our board for a board vote. And of course, just a continuation of that Senate Bill 13, that means that any indecent content, profane content is prohibited in the collection, the library book collections. This does expand parental control by allowing parents access to a list of all of our library books, which we already have in our database. Our parents do have access to our school library database. We are making sure that our school library database and our system that has our students check out books, we're working to update that system to make sure that if a parent wants to receive an alert of what book their child has checked out, that they'll be able to have access to that as well. And then, of course, this policy, Senate Bill 13, will also allow any person residing in the district, they do not have to be a parent, to challenge a library book and the materials. So this will be outlined in our policy as well as we will be sharing later on, what does that council look like and how are we going to establish that library council? Legislative update. This one goes into effect September 1. We are asking to approve the first reading. The second reading will come on August 26. So we are not asking our board to wait. However, under Senate Bill 1173, it does amend our Education Code 44.031. That increases our competitive procurement threshold from $50,000 to $100,000. Currently, a threshold of $50,000, it has to be anything over $50,000 receives three competitive bids. This will go up to $100,000. This is under Senate Bill 1173. And we're making similar changes to other procurement statutes to make sure we're aligning with Senate Bill. Just as a reminder, that still requires that we give three competitive quotes, and then, of course, competitive bids, especially for our federal funding. So the process and the procedures does not change. However, the threshold from $50,000 to $100,000 does increase. Other legislative updates. These are policy updates. And when we talked about what is TASB and about having TASB recommendations, these are updates, and this is around Senate Bill 12, parental rights and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our board has already been working on that since we received, of course, a letter from our administration to work on that, all of our policies. Some of Senate Bill 12, of course, that we're reviewing and updating under TASB, is our discipline for DEI violations that we will update and that we'll see in our procurement and contracts going forward. It's really It's really a policy to address appropriate discipline, including termination of a district employee or contractor who intentionally or knowingly engages in or assigns to another person diversity, equity, and inclusion duties. So that will be updated in our contracts going forward, as well as our policy. Also, number two is social transitioning. This is prohibiting an employee of the district from assisting a student enrolled in the district with social transitioning. This includes in providing any information about social transitioning, or providing guidelines intended to assist a person with social transitioning, social transitioning. And this, of course, is around our students enrolled in Fort Worth Independent School District. Course syllabus, we have to make available to the district's internet website beginning of each semester. We are currently working on ways to do that, because we have many courses. However, we are also working with TASB. Our board adopts our course numbers with a description of our courses under those course numbers that we implement into our system for our students. That's also how we make sure that we are aligned for graduation requirements and other requirements. We are working with TASB to see if our course numbers and descriptions meet the satisfaction of Senate Bill twelve. Parent Engagement Policy, our policy to increase engagement, including the requirements for an online portal for parents to submit comments to the district. As you know, we have Parent Portal that we have access, every parent has access to that, and is actually now, Parent Portal is required to re-enroll and enroll students within the district. We are making sure that we're looking how we can add a process on Parent Portal that can go immediately to a website, to a email with a parent who may have any questions or concerns that they may not want to address to the school, but dress, address directly to district personnel. Also, we have a parent grievance policy that we will be updating, FNG Local, that updates the requirements that are currently outlined in our board policy, and we're getting TASB guidance on that as well. Additional updates are board meetings, House Bill fifteen twenty-two, Senate Bill twelve, as well as Senate Bill four thirteen. House Bill fifteen twenty-two says that our any board meetings are required to be posted three business days in advance. We currently were practicing three seventy-two hour rule, meaning we were able to post on, like, a Friday, and we could count a Saturday, Sunday, and a Monday. However, now you'll see our agendas being posted the Wednesday of the week before the Tuesday board meeting. So you'll see those posted on a Wednesday instead of a Thursday or a Friday at that time, so that is a new requirement. Also, you'll see Senate Bill twelve, which our district currently follows. All school, school board meetings must be held outside of normal business hours. The district will no longer be able to schedule any regular board meetings or workshops during hours of eight to five. As you know, because you are here this evening, those of you who are here with us, we start our board meetings at five thirty, so we are already in compliance, and our workshops start at five thirty. This does allow us, if we have a special meeting that has to be called, it can be outside of work hours. Our board has been very, they've been, make sure that, we always try to schedule those after work hours. Sometimes we've had to do that, but I mean, I can only count maybe not even on one hand how many times a special board meeting has had to be done outside of our eight to five hours. And then our meeting minutes are now required to reflect each member's vote on any item that is voted on by the board at the meeting. And additionally, those meeting minutes are required to be posted within seven days after the meeting in which they are approved as well. So these new laws, they're just minor updates, but of course, where we will follow those in BE Local, and then TASB is continuing to share their updates as well. Here's some other legislative updates. This is really around financial gains from any district employee. This is House Bill thirty-three seventy-two. It prohibits an administrator from receiving any financial benefit for the performance or personal services. And I want to really define administrator, that is, anyone that actively supervises another employee within our school district. So what that means is that they're not allowed to have any financial benefit of performance or personal services in any business entity that does business with the administrator's employee in district. If you're an employee of the district and you're working for another business that also benefits Fort Worth Independent School District, that is not allowed under House Bill thirty-three seventy-two. If you're in an education business, providing curriculum or administration services to any independent school district, that is not allowed. That means, and we'll get to what the action steps are, and then any region's service center, or any O E C S, other education service center, or ISD. So each of these violation of an administrator or supervisor can result in a ten thousand dollar civil penalty assessed against that employee payable to the state, and/or the administrator can avoid the penalty by obtaining board approval to perform services on his or home, his or her own time. So what this means is that the employee, the supervisor slash administrator, must establish and be able to share any contracts or services that they work with that could impact another educational institute, including a service center or another ISD. They will submit that information, and we're going to be sending a process out to every single employee in our district, whether we consider them a supervisor or not, and they will be required to disclose that information. And then we have an internal committee that will review that, and then we will bring it to the board and see if the board would like to approve permission for that employee to have any outside services at that time. ID badges. This is not a legislative update, however, this is a district procedure we are putting in place for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We have shared this already in prior board meetings, but wanted to share a little bit more detail. We will be requiring all of our students at all grade levels to wear campus-provided photo ID badge. That must be visible during the school days on campus and during after-school activities as well. The consequences for not having a visible ID campus, badge on campus can range to, but not limited to, verbal warnings and school suspensions, as well as OCI as well. We know that there's age-appropriate student ID badge procedures are going to be implemented for elementary students. I do appreciate some of our parents emailing me, our elementary school parents, who had concerns. Just so the public knows and our stakeholders know, our lanyards that have been purchased, our breakaway lanyards, so that will help us prevent any type of, when we're playing with our lanyards, there was concerns around those lanyards tightening around our students' neck, they are breakaway lanyard. However, we will be establishing procedures really around our small elementary students. Of course, we do not want our elementary students wearing their badges during recess time and playing on the school grounds and during our physical education time as well. You know, we will be making sure that our principals, assistant principals, and our teachers, you know, really have processes and procedures around those school badges for elementary students. However, our middle school and high school students, we do need them to be wearing their badges on school grounds to make sure that we are the safety and security. Our badges are not only used for being able to identify students on our campus, they're also going to be used for checking out our library books, they'll be used for checking out equipment, our technology equipment, our laptops, as well as going through the lunch line and scanning for their lunches, or if they choose to buy à la carte food in the cafeteria as well. Our badges are going to be used for our bus riders. They are only used for check-in on our school buses, they are not used for tracking. So just so our parents know that our badges do not have any type of tracking device for our students, but they will be used to badge on our school buses so we know who got on and off our school buses each day. Our code of conduct, our student code of conduct, just to share, we will be rolling out, actually, it's already started rolling out, and we have been monitoring the comments for feedback around our cellphone policy, of course, about cellphones not being allowed during the school day, and that they must be kept in their backpacks or away out of sight during instructional time. So we've already started rolling those out through our social media platforms, and we have updated our student code of conduct as well. The one that was posted with the agenda will be updated with some of the new graphics and the tiering system that we'll go into for consequences. There are consequences for violating this policy, and we'll get into that. And this is really something that Mr. Poole was sharing, really around, like, you know, how different campuses will implement. Our intent is for cellphones not to disrupt instruction. And I do agree with Mr. Poole, this, we do not want our teachers to have to start spending more time on monitoring cellphones and really happen to continuously redirect our students around cellphone use, or asking our parents to help us engage with the importance of this new state law. This is not a district policy, this is a state law that we're implementing through a district policy. We do not want our teachers to spend instructional time redirecting. We do believe, and we have monitored the data this past school year around cellphone use, and when we pulled that data, we did not have a lot of cellphone infractions. However, we do want our students, of course, always to have a verbal warning to put the cellphone away and to put it back into their backpack, or so it's not visible during school. Our campus staff will make parent contact. As you see there, we did not put, that our teachers had to make that parent contact. Our high school teachers can range from a hundred and twenty to two hundred or more students on a daily basis. We cannot ask our teachers to make that parent contact, so we are asking our campuses and our staff on our campuses to make that parent contact. And this is all, of course, in our Level One. And then we'll talk about our device held, we can, we'll pick it up, and the student can pick it up after the close of that school day. If we reach where our students still do not want to comply, after continuous warnings, after we see this has become something that they don't want to comply to on a daily basis, then our parents will be required to pick that up at the end of the school day. We will require a student and parent administrative conference as well, and it can lead to in-school suspension, one to three days, as well as it can go to three to five days, and then on-school intervention OCI, six to ten days. And then if it continues where we're talking about there's multiple offenses over multiple school days with multiple teachers, it could mean that a student has to go to alternatively school placement, because they're not only violating our district policy, they are not complying with a state law at that time. We do understand that we form different relationships with our students as teachers in our classrooms. That's why you'll see we start at the lowest level of a verbal warning for our students to comply. We want to make sure that our teachers are our first, of course, person that has that relationship with the student, and ask them to comply before we're involving our campus administration and other support staff on that campus. We do believe that the majority of our students will understand the importance of complying in the state law and making sure our instruction is not impeded. We are not taking the cellphones away until they do not want to comply continuously with the district policy, as well as being redirected by campus administration. Also, you'll see in the student code of conduct, there, we have updates that are around state requirements. Senate Bill three twenty-six really added specific bullying categories that we included, and also around descriptions that were added to DAEP placements for clarity. Around vaping, under Bill six, we adjusted the language regarding e-cigarettes for vapes, around mandatory D AEP placements, removing the uses or possession of e-cigarette from mandatory DAEP placements, which was a requirement around Bill six, so we're updating that. And then also how the mandatory DAEP now only applies if the student is giving, selling, or distributing an e-cigarette. That is a mandatory placement now. If they are giving an e-cigarette, selling, or distributing an e-cigarette. In-school suspension is what we call ISS. Under House Bill six, we, under House Bill six, it had us remove the three-day maximum length for ISS, and the language in the student code of cond- code of conduct has been updated to, of course, indicate the duration for a campus behaving, behavior coordinator and the team to determine that. And the principal must review the placement of an ISS assignment if it exceeds a ten-day referral to ISS, so the principal must sign off on that. Also, you'll see that we have formal, formal teacher removals under House Bill six, that is a state requirement, that has changed with the ability of a teacher to request removal of a student from class. If a student repeatedly interferes with a teacher's ability to communicate effectively with the student in class, or the ability of the student classmates to learn, then the student can ask for that student, the teacher can ask for that student to be removed. Also, if the student demonstrates behavior that's unruly, disruptive, or abusive to the teacher, another adult, or another student, or engages in contact, in conduct that constitutes bullying as defined in the section thirty-seven point zero eight three two. Now, here's something else that changed in House Bill six. The student has a right to appeal the decision of the removal. If that happens and the teacher is requesting removal, we now have to have written consent before a student is returned to the classroom from the teacher, unless there's no other option. An example, of course, is if there's only one teacher available on that campus for that course or that grade level. So the teacher must give us written consent before that student is returned. And a return-to-class plan has to be created and filed before or at the conference for that student before the student can return. And this is only around when a teacher requests the student to be removed from the classroom. There's grade-level restrictions relate to homeless students in Bill six. Currently, the House Bill before this one was passed, homeless students were not allowed to be suspended outside of the school day. There is updated language around the homeless restrictions. If a homeless student does conduct, has conduct that threatens the immediate health and safety of other students in the classroom, then that conduct results in repeated or significant disruptions in class, then they can have out-of-school suspension. If a parent or guardian submits documentation to request the change from an out-of-school suspension to in-school suspension, we will only grant that for extenuating circumstances. And then mandatory DAEP placements under House Bill six, it's been added that if a student engages in any conduct on or off school property against any school employee or volunteer that contains the element of retaliation or harassment, placement in DAEP is mandatory. And that's very important, because this is on or off school property, at any, towards any school, against any school employee or volunteer, and they will be, have mandatory placement in DAEP. And then we also, under the requirement, remove the bullet that only recruit, includes There are also mandatory expulsions around how- There are also mandatory expulsions around House Bill Six. House Bill Six changed requirements regarding the Title V offenses. A major change is while attending a school-sponsored or school-related activity on or school property. Must be followed if they engage in conduct that contains the elements of the offense of assault. That is found under section 22.01 against a school district employee or a volunteer. If they engage in conduct or elements of the offense of exhibiting, using, or threatening a firearm. Under section 37.125. If they retaliate against a school employee or volunteer by committing a state mandated expellable offense. And then, of course, a robbery or aggravated robbery under section 29.03 Penal Code 30.02. Or 29.02. Also are mandatory expulsions from the school district. Mandatory expulsions under House Bill Six will allow the principal or the appropriate administrator to place that student who has been expelled. In a virtual program. However, this does not, under Fort Worth Independent School District, we do not have a virtual expulsion program. In Fort Worth Independent School District. These results of the changes under Title V. And our Tarrant County JJEP program has capped the enrollment to students of 100 students per day. So our JJEP system, that our students, we also share that with all the other Tarrant County public school districts. However, Fort Worth Independent School District does run the JJEP program. And that has been capped to 100 students per day. And that includes not just Fort Worth I C, but the other districts as well. Other notable changes that you'll see in the student code of conduct. Any student that has caught opening or propping open a locked, secured door. Is in violation under a safety and disruption violation. As you know, we have T E A that visits our campuses and does audits. If they find a school door propped open. If we're able to see that a student has propped a school door open. Or opened that school door, secured school door to allow someone else in. It is a violation that has been updated in our student code of conduct. Also, we have expanded the academic dishonesty. To include A I or artificial intelligence when completing assignments. And then a student cannot be assigned to on-campus intervention, which is called OCI. Pending a central office conference, the student can be supervised in in-school suspension or returned to the regular classroom. Depending on the safety concern during the three days prior to our COC hearing. You'll see below, we added the definitions of in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension. And on-campus intervention to be able to assist our stakeholders. And of course, this report will be posted on our district website under our Board of Education site. But we, sometimes we use acronyms and we want to make sure the definitions were clearly shown to our stakeholders. So student behaviors. And we did establish a committee last year. As we were looking at student behaviors and the concerns that when we met with that committee, they really were beyond the student code of conduct. And the actual committee was made up of teachers. Who asked us to slow down and take some more time working through what their needs were. Because it was really around students who had the needs, some social, emotional needs, behavioral needs. That went beyond the consequence of a student code of conduct. And working with not only our counseling department. But working with our psychologists, as well as our wraparound services. And really looking, when we look at our students who need multiple, multi-tiered support. Which is called M T S S. You know, the majority of our students, they show up every day, ready to learn, excited to learn. And really engage appropriately in our school and in the instructional delivery. But we understand, we do have extreme cases on our campuses that do disrupt the school learning environment. And how are we going to address those to make sure as we are refocusing on literacy and math? That our other students' learning is not impacted. As we are going through our changes, we are also updating our M T S S. To make sure that our resources that we have on, to be able to deploy on the ground. To really meet the needs of our students and our teachers. And sadly, some of the funding that was paused provided some of those services and wraparound services. And that's why we're taking time to go back and look at what other funding sources. To put some of those wraparound services back on our campuses to be able to support our schools. So we have behavioral interventions with some of those services and contracts that we've had to pause. However, we did work through allowing all of our teachers who are 187-day classroom teachers. Be eligible for Teacher Flex Day on October the 13th. With that, we did work with our United Education Association, specifically with Mr. Poole and Ms. Baldwin. Around what was some of those required flex hours. And we did agree around additional hours to earn that flex day around our M T S S support. Around academic and behavior interventions and really using our M T S S. Which will be rolling out to our teachers to be able to earn that flex day. Which means they do not have to report to work that day. We do not have students that day. The requirement is to do more required hours around M T S S to earn that. So we'll have more information coming through on that to make sure our teachers have ample time. Teachers are required to finish those hours before October the 13th to be able to receive that flex day. All right, let's get back to student academic excellence, priority one. We want to share with you just some of our Fort Worth I S D summer learning programs. Some of our numbers are still coming in. This is our student participation and numbers and, you know, this is, this is okay. Going to be honest, as superintendent in Fort Worth Independent School District, knowing where we are academically. A little disappointing of how many students engaged and were coming on a daily basis to multiple offerings that we offer. And that we invest in, we invest a lot of funding in our summer school. But for those who did come, we are so grateful they were there, we were happy to receive them. But you're going to see in a couple of slides how we are changing our calendar to make sure we're hitting more students. Not going to read all the numbers to you, but just really want to point out. We did some special sessions at Clifford Davis with support of some of our great funders. And United Community Centers as well. Just around at Clifford Davis, we had an additional 165 students that were able to participate. We know Clifford Davis is our campus that serves our refugee population. Serving multiple languages on that campus. Also, our United Community Centers are great partners. They partner with us to be able to serve 105 additional students outside of our summer school. That our curriculum instruction employees help with professional development and training. And then our Deaf of Heart of Hearing Literacy Camp, we had 23 students. And just some other ones, our Autism Social Skills Camp with 65 students. Thank you, Ms. Stone, for public comment today, making sure that we're including inclusive, you know, really inclusive with all of our students in different ways. And bringing that to us this evening. And then our Autism Club, as we shared. But then also is the Acceleration Camps. When we look at our enrichment, our gift and talent camps, we have 484 students participate in that as well. And then we host an American Indian Education Camp for our students who are identified. So we had 28 participants. And then our C C M R STEM Health and P E enrichment camp, this is a, you can tell a favorite. We had over 1,500 elementary students attend as well. So when I talk about how can we capture more students? And I know we haven't officially started the school year with our students. However, we're already talking about what can we do differently for school year 2025, 2026? And talking about additional days. And House Bill Three, which was passed through our legislation this year. Has given us the opportunity to take advantage of added half-day formula funding. For up to additional 30 instructional days to any elementary school. This was only for elementary and 2020, and 2021 school year. However, they have expanded to middle school for the 2025, 2026 school year. So if our district and our school board approves that calendar this evening. We can have some of our campus participate, up to 30 additional instructional days for our students. On their home campuses. And that is just amazing. And you'll, I'll show you which campuses we have identified. But that means their school year continues past the last day of school. And that they will be able to come for additional half-days to be able to participate. With those additional days, there are requirements. Our campus calendar must include 175 instructional days. Our current calendar only has 173 instructional days. However, we do meet the operational minutes. They cannot include what we call staff development days. So for the campuses we identify, we had to find two additional days. So we'll share with you where we found those two additional days. Because that has to be around the current instructional calendar that we approved. We also have to have certified teachers delivering at least two hours of instruction. On the designated additional 30 days. And then those additional days also have to be separate from the regular instructional calendar. So we're going to show you where we were able to pick up those days. So you'll see here that for our campuses we have identified, we are required to have 175 days. We currently have 173. So where do we find those two days? So we had two parent-teacher conference dates that we designated. Where students did not come to school, but teachers were required to work under their contract. So teachers are required to come and work for 187 days. So for the identified campuses, just the identified campuses, our students will come to school. On November the 11th and February the 16th. And, but we will still host parent-teacher conference dates. But for those identified campuses, we are asking our parents to come. And actually observe our students participating in math and literacy with our teachers instructing. And then we're going to have all of our central support staff also set up on those identified campuses. Different sessions for our parents, parent resources, how to read our assessment reports. Just like Ms. Stone asked that we make that more accessible to our parents. So we'll have staff there at each campus to do sessions for our parents. Like this is what this report says, this is what a math report, this is what it means. We also, with our parent feedback with our survey that we put out around our budget. It was very, our parents said, we need resources when we talk about math fluency. We talk about sight words, what's some things we can do with our parents, the parents can do at home with their students. We'll have those resources available at those identified campuses on those two days. We also will have other resources. The teachers will have time to also meet with identified parents. But we do want our parents to observe what their students are receiving instructionally and ask questions. And then we will have student-led conferences where our parents engage. Where students are sharing with their parents in real time, this is what I'm doing in school. Here's my goals, here's my reading level. This is what my Tier Two resource looks like. And really just like, here's my classroom, mom, dad, grandma, whoever their, their parent stakeholder is that will be coming that day. So for those identified campuses, buses will run, breakfast will, will happen, lunch will happen. It will be a regular school day for those identified campuses on November 11th and February the 16th. And then their last day of school technically will be May 21st. However, our identified campuses will come right back after Memorial Day. And they'll start school back on May the 26th. And their last day will be on June the 30th. And we'll show you a calendar what that looks like. And these 25 additional days will be district summer learning programs. That they'll receive a minimum of two hours of literacy and math. But they will go four hours and we will be doing enrichment on those campuses with those students. You'll see our STEM trailers will be coming out to engage our students. But everything will be focused on academics. But our students will be not having any downtime, any summer learning time. They will come right back to school on those identified campuses, Monday through Friday for half a days. So who are they and how do we pick them? So you'll see here, our identified campuses, we have already met with the principals. And then I have slides to show what's the impact of our employees on this and our teachers as well. Because we know that all, that some of our teachers have their own students and they're not able to work. So we'll, we'll explain that in the upcoming slides. So our identified campuses that we chose are our campuses that we see that continue to need support. There are campuses that have been rated unacceptable and you'll see how many years in a row. So it's my responsibility and it's the responsibility of this district to do something different for these students. They need additional instructional learning time. When you see some of these campuses that have been unacceptable for more than a year, two years, three years, four years. Some of those students have been on those campuses for that many years. It's our responsibility to make sure that they have the ability to stay at their home campus and receive additional literacy and math instruction. So these are the campus that we have identified. And as I said, we have already had a meeting that took place last week for our principals who are identified. And then we are creating a easy-to-use F A Q and toolkit. To answer our questions from our parents, from our staff as well, and we'll continue to do that. We will be holding information meetings at these campuses, what this is mean for me as a parent as well. And then, of course, pending our board approval, our campus leaders will start implementing the calendar and sharing that out. We also are working to develop a communication tool just designed for these campuses. To make sure their communication to the parents is direct, it's more streamlined. And we're able to monitor the progress of how our parents are receiving that communication. It's really important that our parents receive the information now that these campuses have been identified. So they can make plans. Many of these students already participate in many summer camps. So they are, our parents are looking for avenues and for resources for the summer for their students. So instead of them having to go outside and look, we're providing that at their home campus. We will run our school buses, they will have breakfast, they will have lunch. And they will be with certified teachers. Our hope is that we're able to recruit the teachers that are already on those campuses. That we will work with them and share compensation, what that looks like for these identified campuses. But we really want our students to not have a break and just keep receiving 25 days of additional instruction. If we say this is our why, if we say we're focused on literacy and we say we're focused on math. You have to change policy and you have to change procedures. Changing our instructional framework was the first start. But when you change a calendar and you provide this type of resources to these identified campuses with these students. This is an outcome change for our students. And you'll see it's just not elementary, we took advantage of the new House bill and we implemented middle school as well. I have been very transparent to our city that we have a middle school problem. That started in elementary and now they're experiencing it. And now our high schools are experiencing it in their E O Cs. We must also work at our middle schools at the same time. We can't just work at one side, two sides, we have to continue to work that middle, the middle school years. And make sure they're prepared for graduation on grade level. So what does this look like? What does this look like for our students? Our students get to take ownership of their learning, they're going to participate in those parent-teacher conferences. How many of our parents right now, and those of us who are employees of this district? Our kids can't wait to tell us what they did learn. Now, sometimes we have to drag it out of them, right? But when they're excited about something and they're engaged, they want to show us. So think about our parents walk through the door. So think about our parents walk through the door. They enter the classroom. Instead of being a teacher-driven conference, the student is standing there. The students leading their parents are showing them, this is where my journal is kept. This is where my desk is. This is my study partner. This is my thought partner. Hey, you always hear me talking about Suzie, there's Suzie. Look, that's her mom and dad. Putting faces, putting, making sure we're making our students, our parents engage. We can't ask our parents to be engaged as partners if we're not providing the space and the place to engage them. Also, our students are going to have a fun and engaging summer. We are tasking not only our internal staff, but we will be asking our city resources as well to please come in and help these identified schools to make summer learning look different and feel different and engage different with them as well. We'll be increasing our academic achievement and we're going to avoid that summer learning loss. We need to find ways that really work with our students throughout the summer. And this is going to be one approach that we're taking. What does this mean for our parents? They're going to get to engage in student-led conferences with the teacher there as well. They're going to have an opportunity to be in our schools during the day when instruction is going on, to observe the wonderful, wonderful instructional delivery of our teachers. Our teachers are working hard to be prepared for our students. Let's let them shine in front of our parents and let our parents see the wonderful teaching that's going on in our schools. And then, of course, we're going to extend that school year at home and all of our students are eligible for participation in this summer enrichment. If you're enrolled at this campus, you are eligible. We had the option to just pick a couple of grade levels for the summer and we sat there and we challenged ourselves. We said, there's not one grade level that does not need additional twenty-five days of school. So if you were on this campus, we want you to come. We want you to be here. The expectation is you will walk through those doors for the extra twenty-five days for the half-day. And it is Monday through Friday as well. If a parent, we know sometimes parents already have plans, they're not able, we'll work with your parents. We will work with the parents. But we were going to take this school year, and this is why we're announcing it early, because we're going to make sure our parents know that this is available to them and we need everyone to support them to take advantage of this opportunity. What does this look like for the teachers in Fort Worth and the Independent School District? Well, it does not require our teachers to work additional days because they were already working those two parent-teacher conference days. It's just now we're opening our school. We're going to be working with them. But we're also going to be providing resources on that campus from central administration to be able to provide sessions so that we do want them to showcase their instructional delivery and showcase their classrooms. But then we're not expecting them the whole day to have parents in and out of their rooms. So that will be structured and we'll be working with a group of administrators and we'll have teachers on that committee as well, what can this look like? And every campus is going to look different because that's the best part of Fort Worth Independent School District. We have campus that have unique characteristics on each one that are ready to highlight and share the greatness going on in that campus. So their, the principals have already talked to Dr. Dilly, like, hey, can we do this? We want to be able to showcase this. Can we do this? We've already, some teachers have gotten wind of it and they've asked, well, what about like PE? What about music? What about art? Can we have our parents come in? Can they see the wonderful things we're doing? So this is a positive for our teachers as well. Their participation in the summer enrichment days, this will be additional compensation. That is up to them. That's on a volunteer basis. And we will first ask them, that is their students, their campus. They are very protective of their campus and their students. So of course, we want them in front of their students. If we, if they are not able to, then we will open it up and we will recruit from other district-certified personnel to participate in this as well. But we first will ask those teachers because the compensation will look different. It will look different because we are asking them to continue on on different school days to do that. And then, of course, we will give them the priority on their summer days as well over any other teacher in the district since the compensation is different. What does this look like for district staff? They will be required to support the conference days as well as the additional summer instructional enrichment activities. And then we are required and we will provide transportation and nutrition services. So really, our students will enjoy their Memorial Day and they're going to come back to us right after Memorial Day like they never were out of school. So we're very excited about that. Okay. Just to touch on just a couple other things. There have been some questions. We know that we normally have a four-day work week during the summer and that is not a reason to stop doing something different for a set of identified campuses. We already have two campuses that go through intercession. We have Joe Kelly and we have Alice Carlson. This is not new to our district. So we will work through all the logistics. However, what's important is student-focused. The calendar is around students and being focused. When we continue this on for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we're going to have more time for planning. So we may have students come back early instead of staying late. So we'll be able to work the calendar different for our additional school days. However, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, this is what I'm asking our board to adopt tonight for just those identified campuses. So here's just a staffing update. This changes, I was going to say daily, but this changes hourly at this point. So as we're going through, we did have instructional hiring fairs throughout the summer. We're continuing to do hiring as well as operations. And we did share with you about those hiring fairs. We currently still do have two hundred and twenty-one teacher vacancies. And as I've shared before, most of those are in special education as well as bilingual. Those are high-need areas that we are still trying to fill. Our recruitment team is working very hard. We're continuing to process our our employees as well as onboard them. So when I say that this is changing continuously, Mr. Bailey over there, Chief of Talent, is nodding his head and he is checking numbers. So we're onboarding as quickly as we can and processing those as well. As we're talking about onboarding, things that we are experiencing as a district, we are doing a new ERP system. What's an ERP system? It's the Enterprise Resource Planning. And we have shared before in board meetings as well as through our newsletters that we currently, we have Munis, which actually we went ahead and we have transitioned to Frontline July first. And one of one of our team members gave this metaphor. It was perfect. And how do you explain to the public what it means when you change your ERP system? And she said it perfectly. It's like you're taking the heart of your system and you're doing a heart transplant. So our system that we were using, Munis, it was, we had to change over because it was just not going to be viable for us. They were changing their system. We were not going to be able to continue that system. So we did a whole RFP process. This has been two years in the making. This is not happening overnight. One year of just planning. So we have done a heart transplant to our system within the district. That means everything from our accounts payable to our procurement, to our payroll, to our onboarding, to our processing, to our active directory. So when we say this is the heart of our system, this is the heart of our system. So we have, our team has been working hours on hours on end. We did our first transition with that through our accounts payable, our procurement side on July first, very successful. We are able to run POs and we are able to pay our bills. So of course, that is very important. Our next big moment will be on August the fifteenth when we will run our first payroll with our new system. So we know this is the one that, of course, impacts our employees. So our team is working continuously to check our payroll, run it. We do what we call practice runs where we are running our employees, current employees, and every time we're onboarding, we're doing batches, a practice run to make sure our employees are being paid and we look at any errors that come through that. Now, when you have a system, like, there's always this perfect storm. Here's our perfect storm. August the fifteenth is the first week of school. So it's very important. August the first fifteenth, we're doing our first payroll with our compensation for twenty-five, twenty-six. August the fifteenth payroll will also be when you see any of the compensation raises that was board-approved. So all of this is happening with a new system. But it has to be done and it's going to be done. What we're asking our employees is, we're going to be rolling out a campaign, check your check. Everyone, you know, will be able to check your check. Check your check and if something doesn't look right, we're going to be giving you a number to call, a hotline to call. We have extra support staff coming in. And it may be that your check looks different because you have different compensation because of not only our board-approved raises, but then also what the state legislation put in place as well. And then we have new employees. We have employees who have changed their benefits because we're in open enrollment benefits time as well. So make sure if you're an employee, you're doing your benefits online. A reminder to myself, more than anybody, so make sure you update that. But August the fifteenth, please, if you see an error, if you see something that doesn't look right, call us. Let us be your source. Social media can't fix your pay or answer your question, but our employees in Fort Worth ISD can. So we're asking you to take advantage of that. So we will be rolling that out to all of our employees. But we want to share the impact of when you change a ERP system, how it really is the heart of a system, a business. And but our team is working very hard. The first transition went great. So we do want to recognize not only our business team, finance team, our technology team that has been working very hard, everyone, our talent management team. So we're doing all this in the midst of doing our daily work on top of it, of hiring, recruiting and making sure we're ready for our students. So we will continue to update. We encourage our employees to make sure you're reading your emails because we're pushing out information constantly around reminders. So I know it's still summer for some of our employees, but please check your email on our websites as well. So back to school. We're sharing, our new teachers start July twenty-ninth. So we're welcoming them back. We'll have our new teacher academy and we want to thank Mr. Engel at Southwest High School for making, he's going to host us. So we appreciate him hosting us, our new teachers. So they will spend those four days being immersed in our new instructional planning calendar, our curriculum framework and how to access. And also, you know, of course, what does it mean to be a new teacher in Fort Worth Independent School District as well? And then all of our teachers and our staff, they come back to us August the fourth. So we're very excited. And you'll see there, we listed out which are campus days. We have a teacher prep day there in the middle of the week on Wednesday, August the sixth. And then again, on Friday, August the eighth. Thursday will be our district learning day, eleventh. We're doing a teacher prep day. And that is really the day where our teachers just really spend time in their classroom on that Monday. And then August the twelfth is my favorite day of a new school year because we get to see our students. You see the school bus running. You see, you know, smiling faces and just happy parents. And then some parents crying with precares too. You know, so I mean, it's just a great time. You know, we can't wait for that because that's that's our why. That's why we're here and that's what we do, what we do. So I do want to share this. We have made the decision that we will not hold a convocation event for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is really hard because convocation really does bring us together as a family, Fort Worth Independent School family. And honestly, this would have been my first year as being a permanent superintendent to be able to to host a convocation. However, decisions, decision's not made lightly. But when you look at where we are with funding and, you know, really what is happening with some of our programs and some of our initiatives, it's important that all of our funds are poured directly back onto our campuses and really to literacy and into math. So we we spend around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to host a convocation. That's a lot of money. And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that it's not worth the money because it's really the only time where our school, different schools can get together and we can celebrate and kick off a start. But in good conscience, I can't spend that money knowing where our deficit budget is and then we're frozen funding. So we have made the decision to not hold a convocation this year. But that does not mean we do not come together as a school district because we come together as a school district in a different way. We come together to be resilient regardless of funding. We come together to welcome our kids back and we come together to give them that time back to our teachers to be in their classroom, to prepare for the most important day, August the twelfth, to receive our students. So we'll be sharing this out starting tomorrow. Our communications team, Ms. Tennen, had me do a video sharing on the message. It's just real important that our employees, and I'm not talking just teachers, all of our employees know why we're not doing it this year. And it really is not because we don't all want to gather together. But what's important is that all of our money, all of our funding goes directly to our campuses at this time. And just, we have, we're working. We are not there. It's not the easy button, people. But we are still working to make registration easier. So as we continue to do that, one of the things we have done for our returning students is we're rolling them up. So, you know, that just came with a conversation like, why can't we just roll our students up? Really, in this, we're asking our parents, if your student is currently enrolled in Fort Worth Independent School District, just go on the parent portal. You're just going to update contact information and make sure we have it. Our new students, we are trying to make it very easy for enrollment. We have a new enrollment website that you see there. So we're, we're going to get better at it and better each year. We're making improvements. But what do you need to know? If you have not enrolled your child yet in Fort Worth Independent School District, we still have spaces at some of our schools of choice, some of our programs of choice, and we always have place for you at your homeschool. So here you'll see some dates and times and locations that we will, we will be pushing out. But if you need assistance, we're here to help you and we will have staff ready and willing to help at all of these locations. And at this time, that ends my report. But ready to accept any, any questions around anything shared this evening.
Trustees, any comments or questions? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, I just had a question about the current vacancies and how that relates to previous years as far as numbers go.
Mr. Bailey, you probably had the numbers on top of your, your head because we were talking about it the other day. Good, good question, though.
Thank you. We, of course, are looking at the numbers and we review them daily. We review them daily today. Earlier this morning, the numbers that were presented are much even better than we are currently with one hundred and thirty-eight campuses, just over two hundred. And then fifty percent of those are specifically in bilingual and special education. It leaves a smaller number to actual elementary campuses, the next biggest number. So we're in better shape than we have been. Some of the changes that have been made over the last year have put us in a better position as far as classroom vacancies are concerned. And so we're in a better position than we have been previously, more specifically even the last couple of years. So we believe that we'll make a good run the next week or so and be prepared for new teacher orientation as we get that together and get closer to that date. We also had a very encouraging meeting with an educator preparation program this morning that hopefully will be able to provide at least twenty more special education teachers that are interested in Fort Worth ISD.
Can you give me a number going into last year?
I, probably about two hundred and sixty to seventy-five last year. Again, we were coming off of ESAR. And so some of those ESAR-funded positions were, were moving back into the classroom. So that created some vacancies. But I can give you a more, I would say it's at least a ten percent reduction. But I can give you a more, I would say it's at least a 10% reduction in the number of vacancies over last year, at the very least.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Bridges?
Thank you, President Martinez. First, I want to say, Dr. Molinar, thank you for this very detailed presentation and walking us through. Because there's a lot of changes that what we are going to be facing. And I'll start off with the ID and phone. On a personal note, I'm extremely supportive of this. I've always been concerned about the cell phones and the distractions that it causes in the classrooms and so forth. And, and I've even had conversations with you about the ID badges. But I want to know in terms of how are we getting information out? Making sure like to, I go through a lot of these schools and I see these big screens, TVs, and, but it's not really vital information that students and parents, in my opinion, that students and parents can utilize. The concern with me, I know in terms of having a teenager, when I had to take their cellphone away, how challenging that, that was. How, how are we preparing to do that in a way it's not so much overly tasked on our, on our teachers?
See, you know, our first thing we do is, of course, push out social media because that's where we see, you know, most of our, our parents and our students interact. And really, our students are our best voice because they see a change and they notify their parents. The cellphone definitely is getting a lot of traction because it's a state law and other districts, as much as we're pushing it out, they're pushing it out. And, you know, the media is helping us push it out as well with some of their segments in addition to that. When you see the tier approach, we understand that, you know, at first glance, and it will look inconsistent. But you have teachers who have different relationships with students. And it's also where we do not want the teacher, like I said, to have to be the one who enforces it. That's why we really implemented a campus staff support to step in. But we also don't want to make where, where students, I mean, this is reality, and I think we all need to be realistic about this. Students act differently in different classrooms. So a verbal warning in one classroom should not carry over to the next classroom because that student may never, you know, has a different relationship with that, that teacher, and it may never need a verbal warning. They just have a, you know, you walk in, there's a, you know, there's a different field, different relationship, different culture and climate. But then it goes opposite where they can walk in a room and that teacher will have to elevate in one class period where they have to have an administrator come in and remove the phone or remove the student from the classroom. So we know that. So we did not want to put something in place because we need our kids in class as well. So we did not want to put something in place where it was immediate, where we were tracking. If you gave a verbal in this period and then they needed to redirect them in third period, that it built on each other. Because we're going to spend more time tracking a consequence than we are delivering instruction. Now, I'm not saying we're not going to need to go back and redefine and we're not going to have, we are, we are going to have inconsistencies and we're going to have, you know, parents upset, we're going to have students upset. And we're going to have some teachers who want to bend the rules and let them get their phones out, you know? So we're going to have to address that. And we're going to have some students who say, teachers are on their phones, so why do I have to put my phone up? So we're, we're prepared for that, but it's, you know, it's not a Fort Worth ISD. It's going to be a state. So I don't, we don't know exactly how each one's going to handle. And we're going to have to just, you know, pivot and get better. We did put this in front of a group of principals. It was taken to Dirk. But it's hard to come up with a tiered supportive progressive discipline that meets the needs of every campus and every classroom around this. What we're hoping is that the majority of our students that already do respect our school rules and understand that we're implementing this to be compliant with the state.
And in reference to the ID, I, I know in the past, we, we always were gung ho, ID, ID, ID. But I, I would see some challenges that in some of the schools that I guess the machines that they use to make IDs?
So you, as a board member, you have already approved the equipment in a past board meeting. So brand-new equipment materials for the ID badges. After COVID, it became a lot looser. And the equipment became outdated. Technology could not really connect to the equipment to make the badges. And then it was really dependent on the school. So now also, when you don't have a badge have a purpose, then that doesn't work as well. So we're trying to increase the purpose of the badge. Using it for lunch, using it for the bus, using it for library books or scanning in and out for technology to happen to have your badge. And eventually, we want to make it so that's how we take attendance. You have to have your badge when you go into a classroom to collect attendance. We're not there yet, but as soon as we make it, I mean, I never carried my badge around. But now I can't go anywhere in this building unless I have my badge. So now it has become a part of me. I've had to turn around, go back in my car and get my badge because I couldn't get in the building. So we, we need to start making the badge a safety feature, but essential to them being a student in our district.
Last, last point. I know your staff has a lot of stuff going on as we move forward. Is there any thoughts of communicating with some of our churches and in the area to kind of start really getting that information out? This is going to be different and, and not thinking, oh yeah, we're going to do this, but it'll be over next week. But this is the real deal.
That's a great idea. And we do have, I'm looking at tyranny. We do have, of course, a group of pastors that we, we have that we'll meet with. And I think you and I talked about this the other day. Anytime, you know, a congregation wants us to come speak and share information, we'll be there or we can give them the resources to pass out. You know, they're very powerful to be able to share that in their bulletins and the whys. But then also, you know, our teachers are also part of not only our workforce, but congregations locally. So hopefully, they can share the importance of, you know, it's funny when you, you look on social media, our parents are struggling more with their student than our students around the cell phones. And that's why it's important for them to know we're not trying to cut access. We know that, we understand our campuses go on lockdown and that's scary for a parent who's not there. What they probably don't know is we mostly go on lockdown due to things in the neighborhood, not things in the school. And that's for protection of our students to lock down. So we understand those things. That's why we're not taking the approach where we're locking them up in pouches or we're prohibiting them on anywhere on campus. We're asking our students to become responsible citizens, abiding a law of putting them away during instructional time. And our kids can do this. When we raise the expectations in literacy and math, they will live up to it. When we raise the expectations of a cellphone, they can do it.
Last, last point. With some of our outline areas that's kind of jumped the gun and started a little early, anything that we can learn from them, things that they've done that we can avoid some of the bumps and bruises?
Yeah, so, you know, when we implement big things like this as superintendents, we do a lot of group chats and side chats. And, you know, we're, we seem to be right in line as some of them are, are a little bit stricter on their consequences. We, the pouches are definitely not being purchased. And really, that's around funding. You know, do we want to spend that money on pouches instead of in our classroom on literacy or math? And we just chose not to do that. So we, you know, we, we really feel like we're in a line with it. As those district who have piloted, now they're having to go district-wide. Financially, they're struggling to make that decision if they do pouches versus just... And I don't want my teachers to collect them and put them in a shoe pouch because I'm asking them to do one more thing. And the time that you collect it, every, you're asking a high school or a middle school teacher to collect it beginning and then re-release it at the end, you're probably going to take 15 minutes of my instructional time. And we can't afford that.
Thank you.
Trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Martinez. I'd like to piggyback on trustee Bridges' good idea about using our community organizations and our churches to not only promote the cellphone, the law, it is, you're right, Dr. Molinar, we are encouraging our students to follow the law, not just a rule in our district, but, but also to, to use our community churches, our community organizations, our community centers to also promote attendance because that's a key ingredient to improving student outcomes as well. So thank you for sharing that idea, trustee Bridges. I appreciate that. First of all, Dr. Molinar, thank you for continuously bringing back to us, back to our why, and that is students. Serving on this board takes my time, my personal time, and I wouldn't do it if it wasn't for students. And we need to continuously be reminded of that. And I appreciate that we are continuing to bring it back to that every single time we gather. On page two of the presentation, can you provide the, some specific examples of programs that are affected by the loss or the freezing, the frozen federal funding? Specifically with Title II Part A, Title III Part A, and Title IV Part A? What are, I can, I can read those titles, but, but translate that into specific programs that we're more familiar with as people in our community?
Sure. So some of the programs, which are outside contracts, include communities and schools, CIS, that currently work in 34 of our campuses that offer wraparound services. When we talk about some of our students who just have different needs and connections to resources around social, emotional wellbeing and their families as well. So that does impact us. Also, we've had My Brother's Keeper, My Sister's Keeper, which is, of course, a mentoring program that has been in place in our middle school and our high school at identified campuses that work with our students on conflict resolution, attendance, grades, discipline, self-confidence as well. And then Girls, Inc., which works with our all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, really focuses, focuses on our female students in the area of STEM. But then math, other, you know, math as well as literacy inside the school day as well as a lot of Saturday camps that expose them to career opportunities that our females don't always enter into that field without intentional exposure to those. So those are a couple of examples of those. And then with that, as we shared, some of our, what we call FTEs, those are our employees that are directly impacted as well. We have, as a district, made a commitment to keep those employees in place for this year and have moved funding around. However, as I shared, if there's a current vacancy, we will not fill that vacancy for a couple of reasons. One, we don't have the funding. But two, not knowing what will happen even in '26, '27, we want to also be fair to the employees that are impacted in any federal funding. And we do this every year. We have a shift in funding that we have to make some of those choices. But to hire someone knowing that that funding may not even be in place next year does not seem fair. And as a district, if we're not going to have this funding any longer, then we need to start thinking differently. And that's not by just filling current vacancies that we know may not be able to fund future.
Do, do any of these, this federal funding, does it support the Tarrant 2 and 3 program?
We do have some of the funding. It's a split funding in our T3, so we've been in contact with them as well. T3, we work, its majority, there's, I think, around 20, oh gosh, how many FTEs do they have? I'm going to say between 25 or 30 that are counselors in our schools that really work directly with our first-generation students to give them the support to go to college. And it's actually paid for with T3. So the funding that we put in is, I think, around 1.3. They put in around 2.5. So there's, they don't, they do more than a match. But this is really around having that support. On our high school campuses, we have also introduced some middle school, making sure we're ready for CCMR graduation requirements. But for us, it's that handoff to make sure our students understand the process of having the opportunity to go to TCC for free, but then also how to expose them to four-year colleges as well. So we are working with T3 in addition to those other contracts to, to see what we, what our next steps are.
Okay. Does it, does the funding in any way affect, or the lack of funding affect the Leadership Academies?
The Leadership Academies, they receive some parts of funding from two, three, and four. And we have already notified them. Since we do not receive the funding, they do not receive the funding as well. So they have been notified in addition to those outlets that are passed through to Region 11.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the cellphone policy on page six, our slide six, this is, it's, it's a law that is easy to write and easy to pass and very, very difficult to implement. And it, I support the fact that no cell phones in schools. I appreciate that. But I also appreciate you saying that we're not going to get this perfect right out of the chute. We do need a policy in place. I would like to request that the Board Policy Committee keep this on the agenda, just to revisit the cellphone policy repeatedly throughout the year at every meeting so that if changes need to be made, that we can bring them back to the board. As we're getting parent feedback, student feedback, teacher feedback, we need to be listening to that feedback and we need to have a, an avenue to implement that feedback. So if we can keep that on the Policy Committee agendas for each meeting, then we can, some, some meetings, there may not need to be a change. Other meetings, there may need to be.
And I'm happy to bring the data back from, as we go through these consequences. Some will, of course, need to be put into Focus is where we track our disciplinary data. So I'm happy to add that to our Board Progress Monitoring Calendar and add a segment to that to bring the data back just to show where we're at with implementation.
Okay, thank you. So many legislative updates. It's a heavy lift every summer after a legislative session, and we're in a special session now. With the, on slide eight, with the legislative updates related to library books, is there a timeline in place to create the School Library Advisory Committee in Fort Worth ISD?
So we will be working with the trustees. We would like to start with the Board Policy Committee first on the process to select that committee. Those of you who know the SHAC Committee, we have different representation. There are requirements around this committee that's not the same, but shows some alignment with that. So we will work with the first Board Policy Committee and then bring it to the Board for the selection of that committee. And, you know, so that is definitely a priority to put in place. You know, as we share, we're, we're getting the policy first in place and then we'll get the committee. The committee is not required unless there was a petition of 50 or more parents. But when the Policy Committee met, they did ask us to go ahead and start on that. So that's our next. So I don't have a date, but we'll make sure we make that a priority. Whenever we can get the Board Policy Committee together, we'll, we'll definitely work on that.
Okay, thank you. On slide 11, you mentioned a letter that was sent to Fort Worth ISD regarding DEI policies. Was that a letter that was only sent to Fort Worth ISD specifically? Or was that a general letter?
That was a national letter.
So it was sent to every school in the nation?
Yes.
Every school district in the nation? Okay, thank you for that clarification. With, on page 18, the House Bill 6 and the removal for behavior, unruly behavior in the classroom. This is a biggie. How are we addressing this new law in relation to, excuse me, in relationship to students with an IEP or a 504 plan?
So the IEP plan always, that's always takes press- So the IEP plan always, that's always takes precedent, because you also have to have a manifestation art. So there are certain processes we have to follow. We're removing a student to see if it, of course, is due to their identified behavior that they've been assessed and have IEP. But then we also look at the IEP to see if they have a behavioral support plan in place. And then, of course, we also need to support the teacher that if they have a behavior support plan in place, that we're supporting the teacher to put that plan in place, and they have the resources for that. So we will, IEP is a, that's a federal right for our students, so we'll follow that and 504 as well. So we'll make sure that those are followed. But then, the part we miss here is making sure the IEP and the behavior support plan, that everybody's in agreement what that looks like in the classroom. And that's really what we need to work on district-wide, with not just behavior support plans, but really IEPs. And that's just, you know, some feedback we're getting from all stakeholders, parents, students, as well as teachers, is, you know, they, when we develop IEPs, we have to make sure it's something that we can support, not only for the students, but that the teachers have the tools to support it.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding mandatory expulsions on slide 20, this is expulsions from school, not expulsions from events, correct?
If you are expelled from our campuses, or even suspended from our campuses, you're not allowed to participate or be at a school-related event.
Okay. So they're then sent to JJAEP?
Yes.
Which is the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Plan, Program, and that is capped at 100 students for all 20 ISDs in Tarrant County, correct?
Correct.
Is there a backup plan?
No.
Okay.
There's not.
Okay.
But, you know, these, the JJEP, JJEP, these are, you know, pretty extreme behaviors. You know, what will change is when things happen off school property. That is not something that, you know, really as a school district that we've had to really involve. That's been a police present, presence. But we will still work with our law enforcement, because it's not our property. They always notify us, and we work with them, but it always does not result in an expulsion. But we do hold our students, of course, accountable for their behavior. So this will look different. We're going to have to see, as well as when we're looking at resources. I know I see Mr. Serge is here today, and he helps us with JJEP, JJAEP, you know, resources we have there, but capping at 100 students now that this has gone countywide, you know, it's one of those things, we're going to have to see the impact of it. But we, you know, we also have a limited amount of resources there currently at that site, too.
Okay. And then finally, I have some questions on page, slide 25, about the ADSE, the, what is it, Additional Day School Year. I'm getting used to that acronym.
Yes.
So I've been doing a little research on this. I've also been talking to some educators who feel like this program, it has the potential to be a real game changer. And so I support our participation in it, but it's only a game changer when we're implementing it with fidelity and implementing it correctly. So I appreciate that we're starting early. I love the out-of-the-box thinking with the parent conferences on those days, that students will still be on campus so that they can participate in that, and the student ownership piece of that, as far as them talking about their goals, talking about their progress, talking about where they need to work harder, or where they, or every child, every student needs an opportunity to showcase their successes, whatever they may be, large and small. I've also, I did read the article that was linked in the meeting agenda, I have way too many papers on this desk right now, I apologize, that was, it was linked in the meeting agenda, and it talks about, from the RAND Corporation?
Yes.
And it talks about the effectiveness of this, and it specifically mentions that at least 25 hours of math and at least 34 hours of language arts must be provided in order for it to be successful. I'm assuming that that is a part of our plan.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a requirement of four hours instruction, two hours of certified teaching time.
Okay.
I think what we have to remember is that literacy and math can be taught through enrichment and fun engagement activities. That can look different during these additional school times, especially in those summer days. I'm like, how can we challenge ourselves to expose our students and engage them to learn literacy and participate in literacy and math that can spark them, engage them, get them up, moving, talking, laughing, and want to attend these additional summer learning days? With the piece of a structured curriculum, you know, for two hours, but what can we do in those other two hours to, you know, just bring back some summer fun and make them forget their learning?
So this is a four-hour day?
It's a four-hour day.
Okay. And I noticed on slide 27, it said that there was a meeting held with administrators on those campuses on July 16th.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Were those administrators back on duty at that time?
No.
I thought they came back on Monday.
Nope, they weren't. But they attended.
Okay.
And I think we had maybe one or two who were on vacation. We've already caught them up on it. But that goes to show you their dedication to our kids.
Okay. Well, thank you.
We asked them, we said, "It's not mandatory, but we'd like to share," and that's what our principals do, over and over again. They show up.
All right. And so on, when ADSE is implemented on campuses, will the current campus administrators be the administrators over these programs?
They are still on contract during that time.
Okay.
Yes.
It's a heavy lift, because they are also wrapping up the school year?
Yep.
And getting ready for the next school year. So there is, I express some concern and trepidation there, because some of these campus leaders are some of our best campus leaders that we want to maintain and keep. Do parents have the option to opt out, opt their students out?
So we will work with our parents, but they definitely have the option to opt out for, during the summer days, the additional learning days. However, you know, those are conversations we need to have, you know, the why, and, you know, why are they opting out? And, you know, really talk to them about their child's academic progress. And that's when the engagement part needs to happen, you know, and the transparency. If your child is a grade level below, or two grade levels below, you know, why opt out? And, you know, if it's, we're doing this as well, because some of our students, we know, stay home by themselves. And, you know, many of our parents are working parents, or they're paying for daycare, or they're paying for camp. So how can we take that burden off for additional days? But we do understand, but we hope that our parents, that it's few who want to opt out, and they're more excited that they already know their summer plan for summer 2026.
Okay. Can students from other campus attend on those ADSE campuses?
So what we are going to do is do commitments, of course, from our parents and our students. And then, as we have openings that are also our teachers, and certified teachers, then we will open it up to if other students want to attend that campus. But then, we're still going to offer our summer learning program. But these campuses will be here and, of course, look different, because these are specifically. And when you look at the campuses that we designated, just to reiterate, these are high-need campuses that need intervention, that looks different than other campuses.
So also, in the RAND article that I read, it specifically states that districts should start active planning by January with, which, it is August, or it's July right now, but so we're ahead of January. Start active planning by January with a program director who has at least half of his or her time devoted to the job. So I know that in El Paso ISD, which is a district of approximately 60,000 students, they actually have four ADSE program managers. Who are, have we identified who the Fort Worth ISD program managers will be?
So we do have a team that we're working through the logistics. We will not be hiring someone just to take on this role. We feel like we all have ownership of this, and in the financial situation we're in, we're not going to add staff for it. This is, we do have, you know, some staff members as we're, you know, switching some responsibilities around, that we will work with them. Also, we may be receiving some technical support from TEA around some planning and just some help with, you know, learning best practices from other districts. But we have done this before in our district years ago. It was called ESI. Those of us who are a little older than some remember that, and it was very successful during that period of time. And we also, with Esra Fund, did some summer learning on Saturdays, some Saturdays. And, you know, we have dedicated staff who just was in charge of that, and sometimes we just all need to own it. And that's what I'm asking our team to do. This decision was not made lightly, and it was something, you know, as a team, we agreed that we felt like our kids need this, our students need it. We're dedicated to it, but we just do not want to come to the Board and ask for additional staff for something that we feel like we know that we can implement.
Okay. And, believe it or not, my last question, thank you, this was a lot of questions, but in my defense, it was a long presentation. ADSE has an additional component, which we call it ADSEPEP, which stands for Planning and Execution Full Year Redesign Program. Is that something that Fort Worth ISD will be participating in? And if not this year, then 2026, '27 school year?
So as we go through, as I mentioned, possible technical support, we'll see if we want to, you participate, then also extension. And the great thing with ADSE is you don't have to be approved, you just have to submit the updated calendar with those campus numbers. We do receive funding for the additional days for the students who do attend, which will help us offset the compensation for the teachers, so the compensation looks different for the support staff. So, you know, really, that's the only way we can do this. And then we'll decide, you know, how did it work? Do we keep the same number of campuses? What does it look like going in '26, '27?
Okay. Thank you very much for answering all those questions. Trustee Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. On page 24, the Camp Enrich for the Gifted and Talented, what grades attended that program?
I will have to make sure I get the right. I know elementary, because they were at Alice Contreras participating, and, I'm sorry, and middle school as well, so elementary and middle school.
Okay. Thank you, because I want to, want them to continue.
Yeah, definitely.
They're gifted and talented. We need to keep up with their brain, keep them active. Okay. And on page 25, additional question, like Trustee Dar, please explain the four hours of instruction, but two hours of certified teacher.
Teachers. So because for ADSE, you have to have four hours where they're receiving instruction. They have to be present four hours to receive the funding for the students. However, two hours has to be delivered, the instruction has to be delivered by a certified teacher. And so what we have designated is, of course, literacy and math will be our focus. The other two hours could be that we may have a teacher assistant that is working on enrichment, or we have some outside resources that come in as we're doing some STEM work. So they are still getting instruction, but the person may not be a certified teacher delivering it. So it could be some outside programming that we're bringing onto those campuses during those two hours, because we want to do rotations and do some enrichment and engaging, kind of like the Gifted and Talented activities. We want to do that, and that's not always delivered by the certified teacher. Sometimes, it's really someone who just knows really that content or that program, and they deliver it.
Okay. So does that allow the certified teacher to go to another class?
Yes.
Or what?
Yes. Right. That way, we're able to, you know, spread our certified teachers and have them do two hours with one group and two hours with a different group. And then, it really is, how do you rotate students around so they're kept engaged?
So if a teacher's not available to come to summer school, these other people can fill in?
Correct, yes.
And will we have, like, alternates per campus?
Yeah. We'll have to have, like, we do with our current summer programming, we'll have substitutes and others available as well for that.
Substitute teachers or certified teachers?
We have substitute certified teachers.
Okay.
So for summer school, some of our teachers, of course, things happen, and so we always have a pool of others who come in, and they're certified teachers.
And are we reimbursed, like, ADA from our students?
Not the full, yeah, it's ADA per student, but it's not the full amount for the ADSE. I believe if you hit a certain amount of students attending, it's 80% of the ADA, but it's not the full amount.
And that's how we're reimbursed for this program?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
And if, say, a student misses a week or two, are they able to come back? Are they able to start later? If they miss one of the sessions, they?
Yeah. We're going to encourage, like, we know some people have already planned a vacation. We still want that student to come back if they miss a week. You know, that's their school, that's their attendance zone, so we're going to welcome the comeback.
And what if they want to go to another school, like their best friend goes to another school that they don't? Can they go to any school, or does it have to be their home school?
For?
The summer, the additional days.
For the additional, so this additional days is for those designated campuses only, who is enrolled there. Now, if a student decides they're not coming, and we, you know, talk with that parent, and they want to do a different summer enrichment, then we'll work on it case-by-case basis. But then, we also depend on availability. If we have some spaces, we would like to, of course, invite other students to participate.
Okay. But say if I'm a student at Briscoe, but I want to go to Carroll Peak for the summer, can I do that? Or I have to stay at Briscoe?
No. We would like them, because we're offering the transportation, nutrition services, so we're really planning around, like, a regular school day. Good question, though. That's a good.
Yeah. And on the nutrition, since you say that, so do our cafeteria employees volunteer to do this, or do they have to?
No, they don't, we will work, they will have additional compensation as well. We do, we do nutrition services during the summer anyway. But this will look different. And we've already made sure that our current application in for TDA meets the guidelines, so we're able to provide those services.
Okay, good. And since this is a half-day, is it possible to, for the buses to drop the kids at after-school programs, like the summer programs at the community centers?
So that's what we're working on as well, to do that, but then also engaging our own Fort Worth after-school partners. But because it's a half-day, and we're committing to these students, when we get the commitment from the parent, we're able to look at, you know, maybe not everybody gets a, but here's some of the sites in those communities that we know our kids do summer program in an afternoon.
Okay. Because I just, they provide transportation to those things. Okay. And, oh, and on page 26, about the Parent Teacher Conference Days?
Mm-hmm.
Have we made any accommodations for our teachers that are also parents, and they miss out on these days?
So our, you know, our teachers who are parents, this is a workday for them. However, they do have the ability, just like our others, to do virtual. But then, we ask them, and we spoke about this, they ask them to work with their principal if they want to schedule theirs in the morning, come in late, or if they're doing it during their schedule, you know, time during the day where they leave and come back. But, you know, they're still being paid to, you know, participate as a teacher as part of their contract day, but we do, we will ask our principals to work with them.
Okay. And?
Okay. And for next year, or even for this year, with this AdC, I'd just like to see how those students who participated, how their beginning of the year MAP data is compared to the other students that didn't and compared to this year.
Yeah, definitely. We're going to cohort them because it's your decision making. Do you continue to do it? Just because we're doing it doesn't mean we have to keep doing it if it doesn't work for our students and our parents.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Dr. Michael Ryan?
Thank you. I really appreciate the report. I've got a couple of questions. One, on ID badges, what are we doing for students that forget, just like us coming in from the car or something? Do we have temporaries?
Yes, we have a plan in place for temporary badges as well for our students, yes.
There, I've been doing this for 25 years in schools and I've got just a few observations. One, 10% of the students will break the badge where it hooks into the lanyard within a High school girls, a lot of times put them in their pocket because it doesn't fit their outfit, so they'll do that. But the most, the strangest one I've ever went into is 30% of middle school boys eat their badges. I don't know why, but they do. I mean, they're middle school boys, so that's, you know, they're crazy. So we'll need to do somewhere in there, what do we do to replace?
We'll do some hygiene and like some safety about not eating our...
Well, needs to happen. The other, I guess the other question I've got is, we know that students in school, when a sub walks in, they're paying much more attention to the sub than the regular classroom teacher. What are we doing about cell phones if it's with a sub in there? Because they tend to not pay very much attention to it.
Pay much attention to it. You know, that's something we haven't talked about. Mr. Bailey, I'm looking at you as we're doing our sub training and onboarding with our new subs. But then, I'll look at Ms. Dr. Dilly as well. We need to talk to our principals about that support. You know, that's a great point. Honestly, that's not something, I'm not saying they haven't talked about it, but I haven't been involved in that. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. We need to make sure we're prepared for that.
Thank you.
Trustee Lou Menos?
Thank you, President Martinez. Thank you for this report going over the different updated policies that we need to do. AD badges, how many times can they get it for free? You know?
Do we put a limit? Do we say, I'm looking at, one time for free? They get one extra pass? One free one? Yes. And then what is it, $5? $5, yeah.
On slide 17, Babe's House Bill 6, on bullet point three, remove uses or posses...
On which, which slide number?
17.
17. Okay. Remove the...
Uses or possesses of, on a cigarette. Can you explain more in detail what that means?
Remove the uses or possesses the e-cigarette, e-cigarettes?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So they, on the House bill for vaping, it was in House bill before that it was a mandatory placement if they used or possessed an e-cigarette, e-cigarette vaping tool. So they had us remove that. That was under the House bill. And with that, they, we only do a mandatory placement if they're giving it to someone, if they're selling it, or they're distributing it. So now we will follow different consequences for using it or possessing it. So they loosen, what they did was they loosened up on the mandatory placements because cool districts can't handle the mandatory, I mean, that's, it was a lot for mandatory replacements.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I just had one comment. You know, there's a few things regarding the student code of conduct and then particularly around when it comes to the cell phone, the new cell phone policy. Parents, this is where we really need your help and support on this. You know, I've been seeing the policy put out on social media. I think it's a great idea, working with the churches and the different groups, but we, it really, you know, boils down to our, working with parents to get this done and to make sure that our campuses are in compliance. But I can just speak from personal experience where campus, on a campus where this was implemented last year, the positive impacts, positive effects that we saw on just the learning environment and the student environment and the decrease in the number of fights on a middle school campus when this was put into place. And, you know, I've seen some of the comments already from parents, just concerned about access to their child and of course wanting to have a phone for emergency purposes. That's not going to be taken away, that they'll, they'll still have that, but you know, following the policy, we will see a positive impact on our learning environment. So just really want to partner with our parents to, on this policy, so that way we're in compliance. But thank you, Dr. Mullinar, that's all I had. All right. And we are, we're up to number six, comments by board members or superintendent on current district activities and announcements. Are there any comments from the trustees? Okay, seen them from Dr. Mullinar?
I think they've heard enough from you.
All right. Well, the time is 7:56 PM. The date is Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. We will now recess and reconvene for executive session as authorized by chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code under sections 551.071, 072, and 074.
Welcome to the 2024-25 Campus Teacher of the Year reception. And today, we come together to recognize and celebrate the incredible teaching excellence in Fort Worth ISD.
Today, we come together to celebrate what truly makes Fort Worth ISD the place to be, and that is our extraordinary teachers.
This is such an honor to be in the room with you because I know, because I lived it in Fort Worth ISD, what it means to be in your seats today and all the hard work that you put in each and every day. Without further ado, our Elementary Teacher of the Year finalist from Clifford Davis Elementary, our ESL teacher Chloe Marshall. From our Leadership Academy at Mitchell Boulevard, pre-K teacher Denise Carpenter. From O'Curse Elementary, Lorena Escalante. From De McCray, Michelle Williams. Greenbrier Elementary, 4th grade dual language and 5th grade reading teacher Sarah Herrera. Our secondary finalist from Western Hills High School, Angelica Navarro. Carol Shores from Morningside Middle School. Come on down, Emily Allen, Young Women's Leadership Academy, English teacher. A dance teacher from Diamond Hill Jarvis High School, Casey Dobbins. From Apply Learning Academy, choir teacher Raven Minter. And one more round for all of our finalists.
Hi, my name is Michelle Williams.
Hi, my name is Carol Shores.
I'm Raven Minter.
Hey, I'm Emily Allen.
My name is Chloe Marshall.
I'm Sarah Herrera.
My name is Denise Carpenter.
I'm Casey Dobbins.
Hi, I'm Lorena Escalante.
Hey, I'm Angelica Navarro.
Well, first of all, congratulations on being a finalist. That's awesome.
Thanks, thank you. I didn't think it was going to be a thing.
I was in shock, so I don't remember most of the things they told me.
It's a real honor to be here.
What makes me a finalist is that mama just loves her job. I have what I feel like is just a fire inside me.
I'm here because I love my students.
I wake up every morning excited to go to work, excited to see what new adventure awaits.
I love that kid who walks in thinking, I can't do it, and then walks out going, I can't believe I did it.
I am just very passionate about what I teach.
One of my favorite things to do is to teach, especially when it's talking about... Chess voice, miss voice, head voice, all set off.
I have a lot of fun. I don't think I could see myself doing anything else.
I love, I don't really know what I'm going to get every day. Every day is a surprise. Surprise observation plus a tornado drill, plus I got a new student, all in one day, it happens.
I have a few students that say, Ms. Dobbins, you're always smiling at me, but I don't think you know my name. And I'm like, it's true. I don't know your name, but I'm going to smile at you no matter what.
One thing that I love about teaching is I have my why. My why is I'm coming, I'm planting seeds.
Each day, I tell my kids, take another step and you'll get where you want to be.
I try to come up with different approaches so that it feels like it's a little different every day.
I've been teaching for five years. People say year four and five are the years where people decide.
I called my parents saying, oh my God, what have I done? Some magic happened. My parents gave me my own laminator and I spent a good chunk of my break learning the curriculum, laminating things. It made all the difference.
Because as a teacher, you change, you adjust to your new classroom every year.
I know I've had a victory in the classroom when I see my students going to teach their classmates the things that I've tried to teach them.
Once your students succeed and you see the pride and the smiles on their faces, it's so rewarding and it's all worth it.
A win for me in the classroom is that at least I got to hear everybody's voices.
Like, I would never want a student to go through the day and not speak. Like, I have a son, I would never want him to do that. And so just like making sure that everyone's involved.
It really irks me when people don't give students a chance just because of where they come from. Let's change that mindset. And I don't want people to judge it until they meet our kids.
I know that they don't always get all of the best opportunities and that's why I say that. I was made for Duckman Hill. Duckman Hill was made for me.
Hey, I'm a teacher, but hey, I'm fun and we can do yoga, we can do mindfulness, we can sing songs, we can learn Spanish.
Whenever we do part ways, it's going to be very sad. I'm really going to feel like a piece of my heart is missing.
Each day, my students inspire me to be a better person.
I'm very shy, very introverted. In the classroom, I am loud. I am not shy at all. I turned that place into a Harry Potter world.
The students are very honest. They will tell you when you've had a victory or a failure.
Everything I do is about literacy as an English teacher.
I'm the foundation. Letters and sounds and the phonemic awareness, all of that is so important.
And I told them, well, don't worry, you're going to love reading.
To strengthen our students' literacy, I like to start the year by trying to foster a love of reading.
We take all parts of literacy, from the writing, the reading, and the researching, but we're always dancing. There's never a day that we don't dance.
It's their confidence, all of it, math, literacy, it's all confidence. Once the kids realize they can do it, they're going to want to keep doing it.
Music literacy is very important. Without the students knowing what's on the page, they have no idea of what the actual music is actually saying.
How else are they going to be able to interact with the world around them and apply math to their everyday life? They don't have that practice starting as soon as possible.
My students think I'm great because I bring the energy of a child. My students think that I'm great because I'm fun, I'm engaging.
And I care more about their scores. I mean, I'm sorry, can you take that? I care more about them than their scores, that's what I've been...
So my students think I'm great because I can do this.
Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins and the change happens.
And literacy lives. And math matters.
Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins and I'm proof of it.
I'm a product of Fort Worth ISD.
And I'm thriving.
All the way Fort Worth ISD. I think I am the best, so. I did start here, the best begins in Fort Worth.
When scholars walk out of my classroom, it's not the end of their journey, it's just the beginning. Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins.
Yes, it has a rhythm to it.
Is there any kind of movement you can put to that?
Of course I can. Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins.
You're not short of confidence, are you?
Oh, no.
I'm gifted and I have what's called a whistle.
Okay, do you use that for fun or effectiveness in your classroom?
Yes, it's a teaching tool.
We scoot forward a little bit.
Through our LCON Foundation, we support programs that help bring education, eye care, and treatment to patients in need.
We've also come to realize this place is not only just a wonderful playground for the Joe Kelly children to just be a kid.
You guys love it!
Good job, D.
Riding a bike allows children to explore their communities, develop physical fitness, and create memories with your friends.
and create memories with your friends.
This is fun riding my bike.
They are really, really excited to be a part, and it really has added so much life and just so much joy to our recess time and to our day.
Thank you.
Our goal is just to make produce available to everybody throughout the community, no matter where they live.
I'm gonna take all of those ideas, put it together, and we're gonna then create your new playground. Five more minutes, and then we're gonna go ahead and present our idea.
My idea was like a submarine, and in the submarine would be like a kitchen.
Here to help our community. Times are tough right now, and a lot of people, you know, groceries are expensive, and this is a way to give back. Through these in-school markets, we are being very deliberate about what is available to these young children because we know their health and wellness depend upon it.
We've been awarded the highest award from the Girls' National Scholarship, $25,000 scholarship.
We are giving them the knowledge and the experience to be able to have a fun way to talk about heart-healthy behaviors because we just get one heart.
This is a great day.
We donate these shoes to about 4,000 kids that are gonna get new shoes to help them train for their 5K race.
Fort Worth ISD is making it easier than ever to enroll in our schools with our brand-new enrollment website. Designed with families in mind, enrollment.fwisd.org is your one-stop shop for all things enrollment. Fewer clicks, easier navigation, a faster, smoother experience from start to finish. Whether you're a returning family or new to Fort Worth ISD, everything you need is right at your fingertips, all in one place. And yes, it's fully bilingual, so every family feels right at home. It's go time, Fort Worth ISD. A new school year is full of promise, and your journey starts right here. Enroll today at enrollment.fwisd.org and experience enrollment simplified.
My name is Elizabeth Forman-White.
Hola, my name is Diana Garcia-Allen.
Hi, I'm Benetria Jackson.
I'm Paola Rodriguez.
Hey, I'm Jennifer Sanchez.
Hey, I'm Jessica Tackett.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Was this a surprise?
It was.
And I walked out, and there were students everywhere.
No words. Don't found it. Like, what is happening now?
I knew that we would have visitors. Didn't quite know who.
When I say no idea, I'm not kidding, you had no idea that this was happening.
My secretary came running to my office and told me there was a big emergency in the gym. I was expecting, like, missing teeth or something. It was whole school with balloons, so that was awesome.
Without further ado, we have our Principal of the Year finalist.
So, for the title, you want the whole thing?
Hi, my name is Ricardo Alvarez Suscati.
My name is Dr. Shawna Barrett.
Hi, I'm Amy Crete.
Hello, my name is Samantha Gonzalez.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Rancone.
Hello, I'm Sharla Staten. I am a big deal at Moss Elementary because, one, I bring the energy, the joy, and the love of learning every day.
I'm a big deal on my campus because of the staff who I serve.
Because I love my teachers and I love my students.
That's what makes me excited every day, is to get to connect to people who really need you.
It's all about relationships. I don't think you get very far without those.
Without trust, really, there's, you know, your campus isn't going to be successful.
I'm all in with the teachers. I'm all in the instructional work with the teachers.
The best part of it is every day is a different day. You just, you have no idea what you're gonna encounter.
There's a lot going on, and you're constantly on the move. You're trading one half for the other.
You really have to be open to listening and asking a lot of questions. That's your job, right? Is to really figure out what's going on.
Parents want their kids to be supported and cared for, and they want them to grow, and we want the same things.
I empower students to work hard and play hard, and celebrate the victories, keep in the eyes on what matters the most.
I know what I'm doing is working when... I got an 84 on my test.
You know, when students interact with me, and they interact differently than they did the year before, I could tell that I'm making an impact.
When they smile when they enter the buildings, when they are having these joyful moments when they're learning, that is success.
The days that we get to spend with students and engage with teachers and in the classrooms, those are the days that make it all really worth it.
If I come in with that energy with my kids and my staff, and like, we're living the dream, we're doing the things, let's just roll it up and go.
I know I'm making a difference, and I know I'm changing life, I'm making a positive impact every day.
Because I feel so often, kids think they're a number, but to know that you see them, and you see them every day, that really makes a difference in their lives.
They're me. They're who I was when I was in middle school.
It gives me great joy to be able to give and pour into these students what so many people along the way for me did.
Because there were so many that poured into me, I'm now able to pour it into somebody else.
And so, when kids start learning and teachers start teaching at really high levels, then that excitement builds, and you get this really great place to be every day. We started something this year at our school called Parent Learning Walks, where we have students lead their parents and visit classrooms and see what learning looks like.
Who all needs to read for any assignment in your class? That's all of us.
We tend to think that literacy is just happening in our English classrooms, but in fact, it's happening everywhere.
At the end of the day, I'm there to support them, both students and staff, and I'm always there. My door is always open for them.
Authority doesn't have to be loud. Leadership doesn't have to be aggressive. There's a lot of love, compassion, and softness that comes with it.
I'm extremely relational, and so before you're a teacher or a student, you're a human.
Your family does have to make sacrifices for you to be able to serve in this capacity. And I told myself I wouldn't cry.
Do we have tissues in here? This was not supposed to happen. I was not supposed to be a repeat of this.
We are on the go, on the move. We get our steps in.
We run on coffee and Wi-Fi.
Diet Coke, Diet Coke, Diet Coke.
You need a Snickers.
Okay, and a Big Red.
Dark chocolate's how you get through the rough days.
I literally thrive on angry parents because if you're angry, that means that you care.
If my superpower would be de-escalation, and I think I would win gold.
This job is like, sometimes, like being a ping pong ball. I mean, you should never know what's gonna happen to you.
You may have challenges, but you're unstoppable because you make the decision of who you're gonna be and how you're gonna show up every day that you walk through that front door.
My day starts with celebration. Celebration that I'm alive for that day, celebration to have another day to get to go in and affect students and teachers.
I think of the shirt that says, "Being a principal is like riding a bike, except for the bike is on fire. There's no wheels on the bike or even a steering gear." It's kind of like that with being a principal. Everything is on fire, the whole thing.
We heard that last year, too.
But it's great, let me tell you.
Want to know your student's location in real time and get instant alerts from the transportation team? With the Stop Finder app, all that information is right at your fingertips. If you're eligible for district transportation, you will receive an email with instructions to set up your account. No worries. Didn't get the email? Just call us at 817-815-7900. We're here to help. Here's what Stop Finder lets you do. You can track the exact location of your student's bus in real time. Get geol alerts when the bus arrives at or leaves your student's stop, view transportation schedules at any time, and send secure messages to Fort Worth ISD's Transportation Department and a whole lot more right through the app. Getting started is very easy. Step one, search for Stop Finder in the App Store or Google Play. Step two, activate your account using the invitation email from Fort Worth ISD. And finally, step three, you're all set. You now have full access to your student's transportation information. So, don't wait. Download Stop Finder today and travel with peace of mind, knowing exactly where your student is at every stop.
Have you guys seen the new ID badges that everyone's wearing?
Yeah, I heard that we have to wear them like every single day, no exception.
Guess we're official now.
Starting this school year, every student from elementary to high school must wear their school ID badge every day. Wear it around your neck using the school-issued lanyard.
Wearing your badge in your pocket? Not gonna cut it.
On your hat? Not even close.
And sorry. No stickers, glitter, or customizing. It's gotta be clear and readable.
Your badge helps speed things up in the lunch line. Just get it and go.
Need to check out a book? Your ID badge makes it easy.
Hello, I'd like to check out this book. Get it together. All right, thank you.
And most importantly, your ID badge keeps you safe. On the bus, it lets your parents know exactly when you get on and off. It also helps us know who's on campus and helps during emergencies.
Badges aren't just rules, they're tools.
Show it. Wear it.
Own it.
Welcome to Meacham Middle School. I'm Principal Melissa Rancone, and it is my distinct honor to welcome each of you to our beautiful campus. Meacham Middle School is a special place. It's our home, and it's irreplaceable in the hearts of our students, families, and many alumni.
We are honored to welcome you and share this groundbreaking experience today. This project honors the past students, families, and community richness of our Diamond Hill community.
You know, this groundbreaking is especially meaningful to me, and it's so meaningful because my parents once walked the halls of Meacham Middle School.
Right now, Meacham is going through such an evolution of having renovations and a new structure to really put our students in a facility they deserve.
Two and three. Today, we celebrate more than groundbreaking. We celebrate the power of education, the strength of community, and the promise of tomorrow. Let's build something extraordinary together.
We're so honored tonight to be here to honor this group of finalists, but just not for the individual accomplishments because we all know that what we do day in, day out is really about teamwork and being a team. Our 2024-25 Teacher of the Year winners in the elementary category, the winner is Sarah Herrera, Greenbrier Elementary School.
I've been lucky enough to work with some amazing teachers who have inspired me and mentored me throughout my teaching journey.
And now for our secondary Teacher of the Year, and the winner is Casey Dobbins, Diamond Hill Darwins High School.
To my students, you are my reason. Your grit, your joy, your artistry, you push me to bring my full self every single day. You make this work worth doing. And to every educator in this room, thank you.
And now, our 2024-25 Assistant Principal of the Year winners in the elementary category, the winner is Dr. Elizabeth Forman-White, South High Mount Elementary School.
It's an honor and a privilege to serve the students of Fort Worth ISD, but it's also a huge responsibility. I believe it's also our duty to give students a magical place to go to school where they feel safe and cared for. Schools should be places of joy and happiness in addition to the academic learning, and that goes for the kids and the adults.
And now for our secondary category Assistant Principal of the Year, and the winner is Paola Rodriguez, Southwest High School.
I tell my kids every day, "You were built for a purpose. Walk with it." And then it is our job, it is our responsibility to give them an opportunity, an opportunity to challenge and encourage them and help them reach their potential, whether it's fostering a culture of inclusivity, supporting a student through a challenging time, or just sitting with them at lunch and helping them with their homework. Each day presents a moment to make a meaningful impact in their lives.
And now, our 2024-25 Principal of the Year winners in the elementary category, the winner is Sharla Staten, C.C. Moss Elementary School.
To my principal colleagues, I stand here today representing all of us for our hard, tireless, and stressful moments, but it makes it all worthwhile when we know that we are champions for our students, especially when we see them smile and grow academically every day.
Now, in the secondary category for Principal of the Year, the winner is Dr. Shawna Barrett, J.K. Middle School.
I am more than honored to be the principal at J. Martin J.K. Middle School. When I first became principal, my gran, she said, "Did you know Mr. J.K. was my grade-level principal?" And she said, "When you walk in there, don't think about anything else but restoring his legacy. And I want you to know that we are doing that every single day."
This evening really has been a celebration of excellence and success for each of our finalists, but for our students to have this kind of talent in front of them every single day. So, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Fort Worth ISD offers your child the start they deserve. We help your little one build a strong foundation focused on academic and social-emotional skills, one that prepares them to explore and maximize every opportunity. Free all-day pre-K classes taught by certified teachers trained in early education and child development. Your child's future starts here in Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins. Visit fwisd.org/prek to learn more.
This event is a culmination of our pickleball program that we've been running through the Fort Worth After School Program. We have 18 schools, and we have about 70 sex students. It's not competition, but they're being able to play against each other in a friendly manner.
It's like tennis combined with badminton.
It's a little bit easier than tennis, and the great thing is that anyone can play.
You get to meet new people, and like, you could try to make friends with them.
I think this helps them get, like I said, out of being in a box or in their comfort zone, learn how to deal with things that are normally not their norm.
Every time I play a game, there's a lot of moving, a lot of moving, and I'm energetic, and I'm always energetic.
If they're active, then their minds are working, and so the more they're active, then we can, they can focus more when we want them to do schoolwork. This is an event that some kids never had the opportunity to try before, something new for them. You can tell they're very excited, they're happy, they're having fun, they're learning what it means to be a part of a team.
I like playing the game with my friends because we get to have great teamwork and build our connection while playing.
They take away friendship, they take away sportsmanship, they take away just having a good time.
At the end, you get to touch paddles, and I'm like, you get to tell people how good they were.
Type in the box.
It takes a team to educate a child, from the bus drivers who safely bring them to school to the dedicated staff who keep everything running long after the bell rings.
to the dedicated staff who keep everything running along after the bell rings. Every role is essential in shaping a student's future. Fort Worth ISD needs you and your unique skills. Whether you're teaching in the classroom, supporting behind-the-scenes in IT, preparing nutritious meals, or teaming up with our classroom heroes, there's a place for you here. Apply today and start building a brighter tomorrow for yourself and the students you'll inspire. Because Fort Worth ISD is where the best begins.
Welcome each of you to our beautiful campus to celebrate something so wonderful. Rosemont Middle School is a special place. It is our home, and it is irreplaceable in the hearts of our students, families, and many alumni.
We spend a lot of our time at school board meetings making tough decisions. But then, we get to have days like today. We get to have days where we celebrate making the campus even a little better for our students.
Congratulations!
Rosemont Middle School is such a beautiful campus. It opened in the 1930s. And you can look at the architectural building here behind us and then how we have taken one of our newer buildings. And now we're getting ready to make this into a beautiful single campus with the help of Huckabee and Reader Construction as well under our 2021 bond renovations.
Today, we're not just breaking ground. We are planting the seeds of possibilities for generations to come. It is a powerful moment to stand here at this heart of this school, knowing that what we begin today will shape the future of students, educators, families for decades.
So today I get to talk to you about what our board members do for us. And remember, they make things happen here for our school.
It's just giving back to the community. I just want all our students to have the same opportunities that I had.
Favorite part of Fort Worth ISD is always the students, their parents, the amazing faculty that work with them.
Is the people. Just filled with phenomenal people. From the educators within the actual buildings of our district.
I think that a board member is when they direct, telling people how we want our schools made.
I think they make very important decisions. They help the school and they help the kids learn and everything and make it fun to learn.
Do you think being a board member's fun?
Um, not exactly. Because they do a lot of things.
That aren't so fun?
That are not that fun.
I want you guys to tell me what you think the school of the future is going to be.
Things I want to see in my school in the future is like people helping the young kids more.
I think I would like more recess.
I think school in the future should have soccer food. More reusable. Things that you can keep, that you don't have to throw away all the time.
They could add more swings. And plus, they could make the lunch earlier because lunch is a little late.
Our board member has come by our campus, and you've had the opportunity to talk and to share your ideas.
All the kids were in the cafeteria, and they all had big signs and posters up saying, "Thank you, we love you."
He is the one who is providing for our school.
Our board member puts your thoughts into action.
I think they should be doing stuff that benefits us students to have a more comfortable place to walk.
Chairs that's up high instead of being real low because some people can't see with chairs low.
What I do is like drones so they can go around the school like security cameras to check what like classes are doing, if they're doing their job and stuff.
Security cameras and more AI and technology.
More AI? AI? I don't know.
AIs.
Probably should, there would be robots teaching kids on how to learn and stuff.
You think robot teachers is a good idea?
Yeah.
How come?
Because they could translate to other children. I would rather have a real person teaching.
I'm here because I want to make a difference for all kids in the school district and want to do what's right by them. They're incredible young people that I'm happy to turn this country over to them anytime they want it. Have you ever thought about being a leader?
Yes, I actually have.
You want to be a leader someday?
Yes, I have. I have thought about being one.
What do you think makes a good leader?
Somebody who's independent and can teach other people and lead them.
I help my parents.
Yeah, well, that's good. And they're not asking you to do it, you just do it on your own? Yeah, that's pretty good.
I'm going to paraphrase the quote, but it said, "At the end of my day, at the end of my week, at the end of my life, I want to be able to say that I contributed more than I complained."
My teachers, from INN to Pasco High School, care so much about me that they helped me to become the person that I am.
They don't pay board members, and they're doing everything for free, but they have to decide everything. And it's hard to decide for a lot of things.
I think there's no better way than being boots-on-the-ground, working with the community to help you stay connected.
And so each time that you have the opportunity to speak with your board member, you get the opportunity to voice your thoughts at what you think should happen here in Fort Worth ISD. And I want you to put all of your creativity to task and to show what you think our future schools are going to look like.
Seems to me like you're all about fun.
Yeah, that is true.
So what would you tell somebody that's spending all that time and not getting paid for it?
Thank you for your leadership!
Pina Mendoza is one out of about 115 schools that we are going to visit within a five-week period. So we fit about five schools a day.
Oh, that's a little big.
We are fitting a group of kiddos with brand-new running shoes. And they are training for the Cal Town 5K Race, which happens at the end of February.
You happy to get your shoes?
Yeah, really happy.
We are here to celebrate our kids and to thank the Cal Town Marathon and the Mendoza family for including our students in the free sneaker giveaway.
This is a great day!
We donate these shoes to about 4,000 kids that are going to get new shoes to help them train for their 5K race.
Cal Town Children's Marathon. And it's important to keep our youngsters active and sport and interested in keeping healthy. Do they fit?
Perfect.
Welcome to Fort Worth ISD's Second Annual Signing Day. Today, college seniors from prestigious institutions will sign letters of intent to launch their careers in Fort Worth ISD.
Today is the first day of a career that you don't even know how it's going to turn out. It can turn out any way you choose it to be. It can be as much as you want, as little as you want. But I will tell you the one thing that will fill your heart every day, and that is the student you're going to serve.
Our very first for 25-26 letter of intent. Adriana and Brienne, you may now sign your letter of intent.
I knew that I wanted to teach little children because I liked how they were so pure and eager to learn. I also have a younger sister, so I like to play in school with her. So teaching was always in my blood in some way or form.
Signing that piece of paper does not make you an educator. You are already educators. You are already doing the work that makes a difference for students. Signing that paper makes you a part of our Fort Worth ISD family.
What the teacher pipeline does with TCU, Texas Wesleyan, UTA, and especially Texas Tech really gives us an opportunity to work side-by-side, hand-in-hand with our future teachers.
We have to dedicate to ourselves as well, not only our students. We have to know the balance between taking care of ourselves. And when we do, we give more to our students, and we just become a better person overall.
University of Arlington, Yaida Martinez and Andrea Ayala, you may sign your letter of intent.
I want to tell you thank you on behalf of the Fort Worth Independent School District for picking us to start your educational journey.
Super, super excited to be here. And it is my distinct honor to welcome each of you to our beautiful campus. It is both a joy and privilege to see you here on our campus today to celebrate something really, really wonderful. On a count of three.
We're just excited for what our students are going to be able to experience in this renovated campus and with a lovely addition to it as well.
One, two, and three.
We get to meet the children that we're serving, and we get to stand by them as we dream of a better district for them.
I cannot wait to see what the students at Riverside Middle School will accomplish in the spaces we are about to create. Thank you. Let's dig into the future because it starts right here, right now.
Welcome to the 2024-25 Campus Teacher of the Year Reception. And today, we come together to recognize and celebrate the incredible teaching excellence in Fort Worth ISD.
Today, we come together to celebrate what truly makes Fort Worth ISD the place to be. And that is our extraordinary teachers.
It's such an honor to be in the room with you because I know, because I lived it in Fort Worth ISD, what it means to be in your seats today and all the hard work that you put in each and every day. Without further ado, our Elementary Teacher of the Year finalist from Clifford Davis Elementary, our ESL teacher, Chloe Marshall. From our Leadership Academy at Mitchell Boulevard, pre-K teacher Denise Carpenter.
Come on down!
From Oakhurst Elementary, Lorena Escalante. From De McCray, Michelle Williams. Greenbrier Elementary, 4th grade dual-language and 5th grade reading teacher, Sarah Herrera. Our secondary finalist from Western Hills High School, Angelica Navarro. Carol Shores from Morningside Middle School. Come on down. Emily Allen, Young Women's Leadership Academy, English teacher. A dance teacher from Diamond Hill Jarvis High School, Casey Dobbins. From Apply Learning Academy, choir teacher, Raven Mentor. And one more round for all of our finalists.
That's great. Let me see.
Hi, my name is Michelle Williams.
Hi, my name is Carol Shores.
I'm Raven Mentor.
Hey, I'm Emily Allen. My name is Chloe Marshall.
I'm Sarah Herrera. My name is Denise Carpenter.
I'm Casey Dobbins.
Hi, I'm Lorena Escalante.
Hey, I'm Angelica Navarro.
Well, first of all, congratulations that you're finalists. That's awesome.
Thanks, thank you. I didn't think it was going to be a thing. I was in shock, so I don't remember most of the things they told me. It's a real honor to be here.
What makes me a finalist is that mama just loves her job.
I have what I feel like is just a fire inside me.
I'm here because I love my students.
I wake up every morning excited to go to work, excited to see what new adventure awaits.
I love that kid who walks in thinking, "I can't do it," and then walks out going, "I can't believe I did it."
I am just very passionate about what I teach.
One of my favorite things to do is to teach, especially when it's talking about
Chessboys, Missboys, Headboys, Soulsetters! I have a lot of fun. I don't think I could see myself doing anything else.
I love, I don't really know what I'm going to get every day. Every day is a surprise. Surprise observation, plus a tornado drill, plus I got a new student. All in one day, it happens.
I have a few students that say, "Ms. Dobbins, you're always smiling at me, but I don't think you know my name." And I'm like, "It's true. I don't know your name, but I'm going to smile at you no matter what."
One thing that I love about teaching is I have my why. My why is I'm coming, I'm planting seeds.
Each day, I tell my kids, "Take another step, and you'll get where you want to be."
I try to come up with different approaches so that it feels like it's a little different every day.
I've been teaching for five years. People say year four and five are the years where people decide. I called my parents saying, "Oh, my God, what have I done? Some magic happened." My parents gave me my own laminator, and I spent a good chunk of my break learning the curriculum, laminating things. It made all the difference.
Because as a teacher, you change, you adjust to your new classroom every year. I know I've had a victory in the classroom when I see my students going to teach their classmates the things that I've tried to teach them.
Once your students succeed and you see the pride and the smiles on their faces, it's so rewarding and it's all worth it.
A win for me in the classroom is that at least I got to hear everybody's voices. Like, I would never want a student to go through the day and not speak. Like, I have a son, I would never want him to do that. And so just like making sure that everyone's involved.
It really irks me when people don't give students a chance just because of where they come from. Let's change that mindset. And I don't want people to judge it until they meet our kids.
I know that they don't always get all of the best opportunities. And that's why I say that I was made for Diamond Hill. Diamond Hill was made for me.
Hey, I'm a teacher, but hey, I'm fun. And we can do yoga, we can do mindfulness, we can sing songs, we can learn Spanish.
Whenever we do part ways, it's going to be very sad. I'm really going to feel like a piece of my heart is missing.
Each day, my students inspire me to be a better person. I'm very shy, very introverted. In the classroom, I am loud. I am not shy at all. I turned that place into a Harry Potter world.
The students are very honest. They will tell you when you've had a victory or a failure.
Everything I do is about literacy as an English teacher. I'm the foundation. Letters and sounds and the phonemic awareness, all of that is so important. And I tell them, "Well, don't worry, you're going to love reading."
To strengthen our students' literacy, I like to start the year by trying to foster a love of reading.
We take all parts of literacy, from the writing, the reading, and the researching. But we're always dancing. There's never a day that we don't dance.
It's their confidence, all of it. Math, literacy, it's all confidence. Once the kids realize they can do it, they're going to want to keep doing it.
Music literacy is very important. Without the students knowing what's on the page, they have no idea of what the actual music is actually saying.
How else are they going to be able to interact with the world around them and apply math to their everyday life if they don't have that practice starting as soon as possible?
My students think I'm great because I bring the energy of a child.
My students think that I'm great because I'm fun, I'm engaging.
And I care more about their scores. I mean, I'm sorry, can you say that? I care more about them than their scores, that's what I've been.
So my students think I'm great because I can do this.
Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins and the change happens.
And literacy lives. And math matters. Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins, and I'm proof of it. I'm a product of Fort Worth ISD.
And I'm thriving.
All the way Fort Worth ISD. I think I am the best, so. I did start here, the best begins in Fort Worth.
When scholars walk out of my classroom, it's not the end of their journey, it's just the beginning. Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins.
Yes, it has a rhythm to it. Is there any kind of movement you can put to that?
Of course I can. Fort Worth ISD, where the best begins.
You're not short of confidence, are you?
Oh, no.
I'm gifted, and I have what's called a whistle. Okay, do you use that for fun or effectiveness in your classroom? Yes, it's a teaching tool. We scoot forward a little bit.
Through our ElCon Foundation, we support programs that help bring education, eye care, and treatment to patients in need.
We've also come to realize
We've also come to realize this place is not only just a wonderful playground for the Joe Kelly children to just be a kid.
You guys love this.
Riding a bike allows children to explore their communities, develop physical fitness, and create memories with your friends.
This is fun riding my bike.
They are really, really excited to be a part and it really has added so much life and just so much joy to our recess time and to our day. Thank you.
Our goal is just to make produce available to everybody throughout the community, no matter where they live.
I'm gonna take all of those ideas, put it together, and we're gonna then create your new playground. Five more minutes and then we're gonna go ahead and present our idea.
My idea was like a submarine and in the submarine would be like a kitchen.
Here to help our community. Times are tough right now and a lot of people, you know, groceries are expensive and this is a way to give back.
Through these in-school markets, we are being very deliberate about what is available to these young children because we know their health and wellness depend upon it.
We've been awarded the highest award from the Girls' National Scholarship, $25,000 scholarship.
We are giving them the knowledge and the experience to be able to have a fun way to talk about heart healthy behaviors because we just get one heart.
This is a great day.
We donate these shoes to about 4,000 kids that are gonna get new shoes to help them train for their 5K race.
Fort Worth ISD is making it easier than ever to enroll in our schools with our brand new enrollment website. Designed with families in mind, enrollment.fwisd.org is your one-stop shop for all things enrollment. Fewer clicks, easier navigation, a faster, smoother experience from start to finish. Whether you're a returning family or new to Fort Worth ISD, everything you need is right at your fingertips, all in one place. And yes, it's fully bilingual, so every family feels right at home. It's go time, Fort Worth ISD. A new school year is full of promise and your journey starts right here. Enroll today at enrollment.fwisd.org and experience enrollment simplified.
My name is Elizabeth Forman-White.
Hola, my name is Diana Chrissy Allen.
Hi, I'm Benetria Jackson.
I'm Paola Rodriguez.
Hey, I'm Jennifer Sanchez. Hey, I'm Jessica Tackett.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Was this a surprise?
It was. And I walked out and there were students everywhere.
No words. Don't found it. Like, what is happening now?
I knew that we would have visitors. Didn't quite know who.
When I say no idea, I'm not kidding, you had no idea that this was happening. My secretary came running to my office and told me there was a big emergency in the gym. I was expecting like missing teeth or something. It was old school balloons, so that was awesome.
Without further ado, we have our Principal of the Year finalist.
So for the title, you want the whole thing?
Hi, my name is Ricardo Alvarez Suscati.
My name is Dr. Shawna Barrett.
Hi, I'm Amy Crete.
Hello, my name is Samantha Gonzalez.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Rincon.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Staton. I am a big deal at Moss Elementary because one, I bring the energy, the joy, and the love of learning every day.
I'm a big deal on my campus because of the staff who I serve.
Because I love my teachers and I love my students.
That's what makes me excited every day is to get to connect to people who really need you.
It's all about relationships. I don't think you get very far without those.
Without trust, really, there's, you know, your campus isn't going to be successful.
I'm all in with the teachers. I'm all in the instructional work with the teachers.
The best part of it is every day is a different day. You just, you have no idea what you're gonna encounter.
There's a lot going on and you're constantly on the move. You're trading one half for the other.
You really have to be open to listening and asking a lot of questions. That's your job, right, is to really figure out what's going on.
Parents want their kids to be supported and cared for and they want them to grow and we want the same things.
I empower students to work hard and play hard and celebrate the victories, keeping the eyes on what matters the most.
I know what I'm doing is working when. I got an 84 on my test.
You know, when students interact with me and they interact differently than they did the year before, I could tell that I'm making an impact. When they smile when they enter the buildings, when they are having these joyful moments when they're learning, that is success.
The days that we get to spend with students and engage with teachers and in the classrooms, those are the days that make it all really worth it.
If I come in with that energy with my kids and my staff and like, we're living the dream, we're doing the things, let's just roll it up and go.
I know I'm making a difference and I know I'm changing life and making a positive impact every day.
Because I feel so often, kids think they're a number, but to know that you see them and you see them every day, that really makes a difference in their lives. They're me. They're who I was when I was in middle school.
It gives me great joy to be able to give and pour into these students what so many people along the way for me did. Because there were so many that poured into me, I'm now able to pour it into somebody else.
And so when kids start learning and teachers start teaching at really high levels, then that excitement builds and you get this really great place to be every day. Well, we started something this year at our school called Parent Learning Walks, where we have students lead their parents and visit classrooms and see what learning looks like.
Who all needs to read for any assignment in your class? That's all of us.
We tend to think that literacy is just happening in our English classrooms, but in fact, it's happening everywhere.
At the end of the day, I'm there to support them, both students and staff, and I'm always there. My door is always open for them. Authority doesn't have to be loud. Leadership doesn't have to be aggressive. There's a lot of love, compassion, and softness that comes with it. I'm extremely relational and so before you're a teacher or a student, you're a human.
Your family does have to make sacrifices for you to be able to serve in this capacity. And I told myself I wouldn't cry.
Do we have tissues in here? This was not supposed to happen. I was not supposed to be a repeat of this.
We are on the go, on the move. We get our steps in.
We run on coffee and wifi.
Diet Coke, diet Coke, diet Coke.
You need a Snickers.
Okay, and a Big Red.
Dark chocolate's how you get through the rough days.
I literally thrive on angry parents because if you're angry, that means that you care.
If my superpower would be de-escalation, then I think I would win gold.
This job is like sometimes like being a ping pong ball. I mean, you should never know what's gonna happen to you.
You may have challenges, but you're unstoppable because you make the decision of who you're gonna be and how you're gonna show up every day that you walk through that front door.
My day starts with celebration. Celebration that I'm alive for that day, celebration to have another day to get to go in and affect students and teachers.
I think of the shirt that says, being a principal is like riding a bike, except for the bike is on fire. There's no wheels on the bike or even a steering gear. It's kind of like that with being a principal. Everything is on fire, the whole thing.
We heard that last year too.
But it's great, let me tell you.
Want to know your student's location in real time and get instant alerts from the transportation team? With the Stop Finder app, all that information is right at your fingertips. If you're eligible for district transportation, you will receive an email with instructions to set up your account. No worries. Didn't get the email? Just call us at 817-815-7900. We're here to help. Here's what Stop Finder lets you do. You can track the exact location of your student's bus in real time. Get geo alerts when the bus arrives at or leaves your student's stop. View transportation schedules at any time and send secure messages to Fort Worth ISD's Transportation Department and a whole lot more right through the app. Getting started is very easy. Step one, search for Stop Finder in the App Store or Google Play. Step two, activate your account using the invitation email from Fort Worth ISD. And finally, step three, you're all set. You now have full access to your student's transportation information. So don't wait. Download Stop Finder today and travel with peace of mind, knowing exactly where your student is at every stop.
Have you guys seen the new ID badges that everyone's wearing?
Yeah, I heard that we have to wear them like every single day, no exception.
You guys, we're official now.
Starting this school year, every student from elementary to high school must wear their school ID badge every day. Wear it around your neck using the school-issued lanyard.
Wearing your badge in your pocket? Not gonna cut it.
On your hat? Not even close. And sorry. No stickers, glitter, or customizing. It's gotta be clear and readable.
Your badge helps speed things up in the lunch line. Just get it and go. Need to check out a book? Your ID badge makes it easy.
Hello, I'd like to check out this book. Good to go. All right, thank you.
And most importantly, your ID badge keeps you safe. On the bus, it lets your parents know exactly when you get on and off.
It also helps us know who's on campus and helps during emergencies.
Badges aren't just rules, they're tools.
Show it. Wear it.
Own it.
Welcome to Meacham Middle School. I'm Principal Melissa Rincon and it is my distinct honor to welcome each of you to our beautiful campus. Meacham Middle School is a special place. It's our home and it's irreplaceable in the hearts of our students, families, and many alumni.
We are honored to welcome you and share this groundbreaking experience today. This project honors the past students, families, and community richness of our Diamond Hill community.
You know, this groundbreaking is especially meaningful to me. And it's so meaningful because my parents once walked the halls of Meacham Middle School.
Right now, Meacham is going through such an evolution of having renovations and a new structure to really put our students in a facility they deserve.
Two and three.
Today, we celebrate more than groundbreaking. We celebrate the power of education, the strength of community, and the promise of tomorrow. Let's build something extraordinary together.
We're so honored tonight to be here to honor this group of finalists, but just not for the individual accomplishments because we all know that what we do day in and day out is really about teamwork and being a team.
Our 2024-25 Teacher of the Year winners in the elementary category, the winner is Sarah Herrera, Greenbrier Elementary School.
I've been lucky enough to work with some amazing teachers who have inspired me and mentored me throughout my teaching journey.
And now for our Secondary Teacher of the Year, and the winner is Casey Dobbins, Diamond Hill Jarvis High School.
To my students, you are my reason. Your grit, your joy, your artistry, you push me to bring my full self every single day. You make this work worth doing. And to every educator in this room, thank you.
And now our 2024-25 Assistant Principal of the Year winners in the elementary category. The winner is Dr. Elizabeth Forman-White, South High Mount Elementary School.
It's an honor and a privilege to serve the students of Fort Worth ISD, but it's also a huge responsibility. I believe it's also our duty to give students a magical place to go to school where they feel safe and cared for. Schools should be places of joy and happiness in addition to the academic learning, and that goes for the kids and the adults.
And now for our secondary category Assistant Principal of the Year, and the winner is Paola Rodriguez, Southwest High School.
I tell my kids every day, you were built for a purpose. Walk with it. And then it is our job, it is our responsibility to give them an opportunity. An opportunity to challenge and encourage them and help them reach their potential, whether it's fostering a culture of inclusivity, supporting a student through a challenging time, or just sitting with them at lunch and helping them with their homework. Each day presents a moment to make a meaningful impact in their lives.
And now our 2024-25 Principal of the Year winners in the elementary category. The winner is Charlotte Staton, C.C. Moss Elementary School.
To my principal colleagues, I stand here today representing all of us for our hard, tireless, and stressful moments. But it makes it all work well when we know that we are champions for our students, especially when we see them smile and go academically every day.
Now, in the secondary category for Principal of the Year, the winner is Dr. Shawna Barrett, Jackay Middle School.
I am more than honored to be the principal at J. Martin Jackay Middle School. When I first became principal, my grand, she said, did you know Mr. Jackay was my grade level principal? And she said, when you walk in there, don't think about anything else but restoring his legacy. And I want you to know that we are doing that every single day.
This evening really has been a celebration of excellence and success for each of our finalists, but for our students to have this kind of talent in front of them every single day. So thank you so much from bottom of my heart.
This event is a culmination of our pickleball program that we've been running through the Fort Worth After School Program. We have 18 schools and we have about 70 sex students.
It's not competition, but they're being able to play against each other in a friendly manner.
It's like tennis combined with badminton.
It's a little bit easier than tennis and the great thing is that anyone can play.
You get to meet new people and like, and like you could try to make friends with them.
I think this helps them get, like I said, out of being in a box or in their comfort zone, learn how to deal with things that are normally not their norm.
Every time I play a game, there's a lot of moving, a lot of moving, and I'm energetic and I'm always energetic.
If they're active, then their minds are working and so the more they're active, then we can, they can focus more when we want them to do schoolwork. This is an event that some kids never had the opportunity to try before, something new for them. You can tell they're.
You can tell they're very excited, they're happy, they're having fun, they're learning what it means to be a part of a team.
I like playing the game with my friends because we get to have great teamwork and build our connection while playing.
They take away friendship, they take away sportsmanship, they take away just having a good time.
At the end, you get to touch paddles, and then like you get to tell people how good they were.
Take it apart!
It takes a team to educate a child. From the bus drivers who safely bring them to school, to the dedicated staff who keep everything running long after the bell rings, every role is essential in shaping a student's future. Fort Worth ISD needs you and your unique skills. Whether you're teaching in the classroom, supporting behind-the-scenes in IT, preparing nutritious meals, or teaming up with our classroom heroes, there's a place for you here. Apply today and start building a brighter tomorrow for yourself and the students you'll inspire. Because Fort Worth ISD is where the best begins.
Welcome each of you to our beautiful campus to celebrate something so wonderful. Rosemont Middle School is a special place. It is our home, and it is irreplaceable in the hearts of our students, families, and many alumni.
We spend a lot of our time at school board meetings making tough decisions, but then we get to have days like today. We get to have days where we celebrate making the campus even a little better for our students.
Congratulations!
Rosemont Middle School is such a beautiful campus. It opened in the 1930s, and you can look at the architectural building here behind us, and then how we have taken one of our newer buildings. And now we're getting ready to make this into a beautiful, single campus with the help of Huckabee and Reader Construction as well, under our 2021 bond renovations.
Today, we're not just breaking ground. We are planting the seeds of possibilities for generations to come. It is a powerful moment to stand here at this heart of this school, knowing that what we begin today will shape the future of students, educators, families for decades.
So today I get to talk to you about what our board members do for us. And remember, they make things happen here for our school.
It's just giving back to the community. I just want all our students to have the same opportunities that I had.
Favorite part of Fort Worth ISD is always the students, their parents, the amazing faculty that work with them, is the people. Just filled with phenomenal people, from the educators within the actual buildings of our district.
I think that a board member is when they direct telling people how we want our schools made.
I think they make very important decisions.
They help the school and they help the kids learn and everything, and make it fun to learn.
Do you think being a board member is fun?
Um, not exactly, because they do a lot of things.
That aren't so fun?
That are not that fun.
I want you guys to tell me what you think the school of the future is going to be.
Things I want to see in my school in the future is like people helping the young kids more.
I think I would like more recess.
I think school in the future should have soccer field.
More reusable, things that you can keep, that you don't have to throw away all the time.
For they could add more swings, and plus they could make the lunch earlier because lunch is a little late.
Our board member has come by our campus, and you've had the opportunity to talk and to share your ideas.
All the kids were in the cafeteria, and they all had big signs and posters up saying, "Thank you, we love you."
He is the one who is providing for our school.
Our board member puts your thoughts into action.
I think they should be doing stuff that benefits our students to have a more comfortable place in school.
Chairs that's up high instead of being real low, because some people can't see which chair is low.
What I do is like drones, so they can go around the school like security camera to check what like classes are doing, if they're doing their job and stuff.
Security cameras and more AI and technology.
More AIL? IIL? I don't know.
AIs.
Pretty sure there would be robots teaching kids on how to learn and stuff.
You think robot teachers is a good idea?
Yeah.
How come?
Because they could translate to other children. I would rather have a real person teaching.
I'm here because I want to make a difference for all kids in the school district and want to do what's right by them. They're incredible young people that I'm happy to turn this country over to them anytime they want it.
Have you ever thought about being a leader?
Yes, I actually have.
You want to be a leader someday?
Yes. I have, I have thought about being one.
What do you think makes a good leader?
Somebody who's independent and can teach other people and lead them.
I help my parents.
Yeah, well, that's good. And they're not asking you to do it, you just do it on your own? Yeah, that's pretty good.
I'm going to paraphrase the quote, but it said, "At the end of my day, at the end of my week, at the end of my life, I want to be able to say that I contributed more than I complained."
My teachers from INA to Pasco High School care so much about me that helped me to become the person that I am.
They don't pay board members, and they're doing everything for free, but they have to decide everything. And it's hard to decide for a lot of things.
I think there's no better way than being boots on the ground, working with the community to help you stay connected.
And so each time that you have the opportunity to speak with your board member, you get the opportunity to voice your thoughts at what you think should happen here in Fort Worth ISD. And I want you to put all of your creativity to task and to show what you think our future schools are going to look like.
Seems to me like you're all about fun.
Yeah, that is true.
So what would you tell somebody that's spending all that time and not getting paid for it?
Thank you for your leadership!
Raffino Mendoza is one out of about 115 schools that we are going to visit within a five-week period, so we fit about five schools a day.
Oh, that's a little big.
We are fitting a group of kiddos with brand-new running shoes, and they are training for the Cowtown 5K race, which happens at the end of February.
You happy to get your shoes?
Yeah, really happy.
We are here to celebrate our kids and to thank the Cowtown Marathon and the Mendoza family for including our students in the free sneaker giveaway.
This is a great day!
We donate these shoes to about 4,000 kids that are going to get new shoes to help them train for their 5K race.
Cowtown Children's Marathon, and it's important to keep our youngsters active in sport and interested in keeping healthy. Do they fit?
Perfect.
And welcome to Fort Worth ISD's Second Annual Signing Day. Today, college seniors from prestigious institutions will sign letters of intent to launch their careers in Fort Worth ISD.
Today is the first day of a career that you don't even know how it's going to turn out. It can turn out any way you choose it to be. It can be as much as you want, as little as you want. But I will tell you the one thing that will fill your heart every day, and that is the student you're going to serve.
Our very first for 25-26 letter of intent. Adriana and Brienne, you may now sign your letter of intent.
I knew that I wanted to teach little children because I liked how they were so pure and eager to learn. I also have a younger sister, so I liked to play school with her, so teaching was always in my blood in some way or form.
Signing that piece of paper does not make you an educator. You are already educators. You are already doing the work that makes a difference for students. Signing that paper makes you a part of our Fort Worth ISD family.
What the teacher pipeline does with TCU, Texas Wesleyan, UTA, and especially Texas Tech, really gives us an opportunity to work side by side, hand in hand, with our future teachers.
We have to dedicate to ourselves as well, not only our students. We have to know the balance between taking care of ourselves, and when we do, we give more to our students, and we just become a better person overall.
University of Arlington, Yaida Martinez and Andrea Ayala, you may sign your letter of intent.
I want to tell you thank you on behalf of the Fort Worth Independent School District for picking us to start your educational journey.
Super, super excited to be here. And it is my distinct honor to welcome each of you to our beautiful campus. It is both a joy and privilege to see you here on our campus today to celebrate something really, really wonderful. On a count of three.
We're just excited for what our students are going to be able to experience in this renovated campus and with a lovely addition to it as well.
One, two, and three.
We get to meet the children that we're serving, and we get to stand by them as we dream of a better district for them.
I cannot wait to see what the students at Riverside Middle School will accomplish in the spaces we are about to create. Thank you, let's dig into the future because it starts right here, right now.
In accordance with the open meetings law, the board opened the meeting at 5:31 PM with the quorum present. Reced, open session convened executive session, adjourned executive session, and now reconvened open session at 9:27 PM with the quorum present. We are up to consent agenda items. As board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with the board policy, BBFA local. This is a reminder to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Trustees, we've been provided an opportunity prior to tonight's meeting to submit questions and receive responses concerning the consent agenda and action agenda items. I also have a point of clarification for consent item eight AV. We need to clarify that the name of the vendor, the T, Fort Worth Transportation Authority, should be Fort Worth Transportation Authority Doing Business as Trinity Metro. Trustees, are there any questions or comments at this time specific to consent agenda items? Trustee Dar?
Yes, due to my employment with ESC Region 11, I will be abstaining from item eight X, the Teaks Resource Systems Subscription. So that's item eight X, consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, and we are also pulling consent item eight D and eight V. And moving those to action items, sorry. Let's see. Eight D and eight V. Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion accepting consent agenda minus eight D, eight V, and eight X?
So moved.
Just Jackson and Ryan. All right. Any discussion? We're up to consent agenda minus those. Please move to voting. All right, and motion passes nine zero. Now we will go to those items removed. So we were eight, do I have a motion for eight consent agenda item eight D?
So moved.
Trustee Jackson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please move to voting.
I have a discussion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Trustee Dar?
Thank you. So with this policy, this is the policy that, pardon me? We're on eight D?
Eight D, consent agenda, item eight D.
This is the board policy DB local, correct?
Yes, the approved first reading revisions to board policy DB local.
Okay, thank you. So, education is not a competition. I want all students in all districts to be academically successful. However, recruiting top teachers and staff is a competition. It is a stiff competition. Other districts in Texas and in Tarrant County have figured this out. They are playing the game. Recruiting top teachers and staff is a competition. So out of, I've done a little digging, and out of some of the top 10 school districts in Texas, the districts that have this policy, DB local, which is an optional policy, the only one out of Dallas ISD, Houston ISD, Cypress Fairbanks, Northside ISD, Katy ISD, Fort Bend ISD, Austin ISD, Conroe ISD, Frisco ISD, and Aldine ISD that actually even has this policy is Dallas ISD. And Dallas ISD does not require cabinet staff to live within the school district boundaries, only the superintendent. In Tarrant County, there are 20 school districts. And I took a deep dive and looked into every, all 20 of those school policies for DB local. The only districts, well, of those 20 districts, Alito ISD does not have this policy. Arlington ISD does not have this policy. Azol ISD does not have this policy. Birdville ISD does not have this policy. Burleson ISD does not have this policy. Carroll ISD does not have this policy. Castleberry ISD does not have this policy. Crowley ISD does not have this policy. Eagle Mountain Saginaw has this policy, however, only the superintendent is required to live within the district. Everman ISD does not have this policy. Fort Worth ISD has this policy and requires both the superintendent and the cabinet to live within the district limits. Godley ISD does not have this policy. Grapevine Colleyville ISD does not have this policy. Hurst Jesus Bedford does not have this policy. Keller ISD does not have this policy. Kennedale ISD does not have this policy. Lake Worth ISD does not have this policy. Mansfield ISD does have this policy, only requiring the superintendent to live within the district, not the cabinet members. Northwest ISD does not have this policy. And White Settlement ISD does not have this policy. So when we look at the financial aspects of this policy, what we are asking of a new employee to Fort Worth ISD at the cabinet level is that they move into the district, which as of yesterday, home loan interest rates, if you're getting a 30-year fixed rate loan, the percentage rate, your interest rate is going to be 6.85%. That is significantly higher than the interest rate that my family pays right now on our home loan. That's a big ask. A 15-year fixed rate would be 6.07%, still significantly higher than the rate that my family pays on our home. This policy, as it is currently written, expects administrators to not only uproot their families, leave their neighborhoods, but it also requires them to incur all moving costs. Fort Worth ISD does not pay for those and sacrifices reasonable interest rates. And the higher up you advance in administration, the less job security you have. That's a fact. So let's pretend this is a football game and Dr. Mullenar is our quarterback. Our opponents are Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD, Alito ISD, Keller ISD, Birdville ISD, Dallas ISD, Plano ISD, Arlington Irving. Every school district in North Texas is ultimately our opponent in this football game. So this board expects, we don't just expect Dr. Mullenar to win the game. We demand that she wins the game by improving student outcomes, okay? We're demanding that she win the game with one hand tied behind her back. So Dr. Hollingsworth, the superintendent in Eagle Mountain ISD, does not have his hand tied behind his back. He can hire whoever he wants to in North Texas or outside of North Texas. Dr. Bond, the superintendent in Alito ISD, does not have her hand tied behind her back. Dr. Elizade, the superintendent in Dallas ISD, does not have her hand tied behind her back. Mike Miles, we love to compare with Mike Miles, but Mike Miles, the superintendent in Houston ISD, does not have his hand tied behind his back. So other districts have figured this out and they are playing the game. Recruiting top teachers and staff is a competition. I recognize that not everybody will agree with me on this and I respect the differences of opinion. But we've got to give Dr. Mullenar every tool we can to recruit the best staff if we want to see continued increase in student achievement. Fort Worth ISD's current policy, as it is currently written, is a 20th century policy, but we are tasked with educating students in the 21st century. We are one quarter into the 21st century and yet we have policies designed for 20th century staffing. So the question is, will this board equip Dr. Mullenar, our quarterback, with every possible tool to improve student outcomes? Or will we continue to demand that she win every football game with one hand tied behind her back? Thank you.
Thank you, and trustee Dr. Camille Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your comments, trustee Dar. But one of, maybe I'm wrong, but when I read it, it says the superintendent has 12 months to move also. Is that correct? It shouldn't be 12 months for the superintendent.
I live within Fort Worth ISD.
No, 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 but it said that policy was changed. It said not cabinet, but it says the superintendent has 12 months to move.
It does read like that right now. Okay.
No, but I'm saying I'd like to change that. If we hire a new superintendent, I want them to move here immediately and not in 12 months. I'd like to make that change.
So that's an alternate motion?
Yes, you would like to make an alternative motion?
Yeah, because I think if we hire a new superintendent, not saying anything, but the superintendent needs to live in Fort Worth ISD within a month or immediately.
So that's a motion and then you have to see if there's a second?
Will you have more discussion? Do we allow the discussion first and then do alternative motion?
You can, but then there's still the alternate motion.
So your alternate, what is your alternate motion?
Okay, well, I still have more comments, but I would, just the alternate motion would be that the superintendent would have to move into the Fort Worth ISD boundaries upon hiring or upon signing the contract.
So the motion is to leave the contract as revised in the book right now for the first reading with the change to eliminate the 12 months for the superintendent?
Correct.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? On the alternative motion?
Yeah, just clarification. I mean, I just want to make sure I know what it is we're talking.
So in the policy as revised, as proposed revision first reading, it eliminates, it only requires the superintendent to live within the district, but it allows 12 months for that to happen. The alternate motion is to only require the superintendent to live within the district, but that needs to happen at signing of the contract or within, I mean, that's, the only thing is that oftentimes people haven't moved, I'm sorry, I'm taking liberty, President.
Yes.
Martinez. We've seen in the past that it's only after the signing of the contract because even the lone finalists wouldn't know if they have the vote until that night. So it still might need to be some time period to allow because if you have the signing, I have not seen where someone, unless they are already in the district, that they would have moved by then. So this is a good clarification. Dr. Rodriguez?
Okay, within, what, 90 days then?
Within 90 days? Okay, so trustee Jackson, just to be clear, I would like to reiterate that the proposed alternate motion is that only the superintendent would be required to live within the district and they would have 90 days to do that after the signing of the contract.
Thank you, I maintain the second.
Okay, and discussion?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Phillips?
Thank you. So if voting yes to this now alternate motion, that would mean that?
It only makes it the main motion.
Thank you.
You still have to vote on that. So you vote if there are sufficient votes for it to become the main motion, then you have to vote on it again to actually yes or no.
Thank you very much for that. And in the event that it becomes the main motion, at that point, the first reading passes with this alternate language to be included upon the second reading.
Yes, sir.
Which would then make it possible.
Yes, sir, which is one of the reasons why you all have first readings to allow for discussion and changes as needed.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Bridges?
I think I just had my question answered because I had discussion, but we're going with the motion right now, correct? The new motion.
So we will be voting to? Your discussion is for the, your discussion is your discussion, but the motion right now is regarding this new language.
To make it the main motion.
But you may discuss whatever you feel necessary.
Trustee Dar, first I want to thank you for the deep, detailed and work that you put into that to giving us a little bit more information. And respectfully, I guess it's just something for me, it's personal, that when it comes to the cabinet posts, and this has come up before, and I voted against it, but you make a great point in terms of as we move forward and want to progress from the district perspective as to how do we get the best people? But my question is, and I don't know, do we find that we are not able to get the best people because of that one clause that we have in the policy? That people who, for the reason, we got them, they love it, I got to move in the area, I don't know. Do we find them walking away? And I'm not trying to be funny, I mean, it's a legitimate question that I'm asking. Because, I mean, again, it's something about being in the area and shopping at the stores and being a part of the, again, this is an I-wallace statement, that to me builds a connection with the community. And unless I can see, and question, and you can answer if you can or cannot, did you say Dallas was the only other one that did not have that requirement?
I said that Dallas, their policy requires the superintendent only to live in the ISD.
Okay.
That that's the only member of the upper level administration that is required to live within the ISD's boundaries.
Now I'm going to ask another question and anybody can answer this. What do you think the original intent was when that policy was put into place?
So my answer to that would be, and of course speculative because we didn't put it in place, up wasn't here when it was put in place, but to make sure that there was skin in the game, there was investment from high-level cabinet members to actually be a part of Fort Worth. Now, I will also say though, in the sense of when we're talking about evolution, we know that, I'll say it this way, when I was young, all the way up to a teenager, I never went to Dallas. Dallas was out of town for me. I go to Dallas twice, three times a week now, right? So I mean, even that evolution of like, I live in the metroplex, so I live everywhere. So under the current thing, if we don't change anything, if someone from Crowley ISD, which is highly qualified, wants to come be in an upper-level cabinet position, they can't come working Fort Worth ISD unless they move, even though they might be able to get to work in 15 minutes right now. But they would actually have to move their whole family, maybe a couple miles over, just to be able to work for us, or we can't even consider them. So when you're saying something about, you know, are we losing anyone? Well, there's people that we can't even consider because they can't work here, even no matter how, they could be in Birdville, they could be in Irving. It could take them 20 minutes to get to work. And, but if they don't change their address, they can't work for us. So although I'm absolutely for it all the way and want people to invest here and everything, to Ann's point, I really want the best people to be able to work here. And I know many educators that work in other districts that live in Fort Worth, that live in Arlington and work here, that are fantastic, that I know that I want to work in Fort Worth, but they have those opportunities to work in other places. So they should be able to have those opportunities to be able to work here as well, in my opinion.
Any other discussion? I apologize, I do not want to cause any more confusion. But as written, the policy says the effective date of employment. So would Dr. Rodriguez, you be okay with 90 days from the effective date of employment? Yes. Again, thinking about scenarios where someone might sign, but they are not quite left or, you know, they have things that they need to do before they get here. But 90 days from the effective date of employment? Yes, it's fine. And trustee Jackson, would you be fine seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Just to answer your question about, you know, why do we have this policy? I think that in the 20th century, this was a common policy in many districts. And I don't have a problem with the policy as it is. I have a problem with the fact that nobody else has this policy, which puts us at a disadvantage. If everybody was playing by the same rules, if everybody, if this was a required policy and everybody had this same policy and everybody was playing by the same rules, then we'd play by those rules too. But why, why would I want Fort Worth ISD to be at a disadvantage to other districts? I don't. I want Fort Worth ISD to have the advantage or at least be on the same playing field. And so that, you know, as those other districts have evolved and have changed their policies, we have not, which puts us at a disadvantage. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that we're playing the same game with everybody else.
Trustee Dr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I understand, but I think as we're asking the community to send their kids to the Fort Worth ISD, that send their kids to charter schools or private schools or home schools, yet our own high-paid cabinet members will not send their own kids to the Fort Worth ISD. I have an issue with that. So that's why I would not support changing this policy.
Trustee Dr. Ryan?
Well, I just need everybody to recognize that we're having this discussion tonight because previous administrations didn't enforce the policy that the board had.
All right, there's no further discussion. We will be, we will move to vote on the, to accept the alternative motion.
As the main motion.
As the main motion. Yes.
So we're just voting to make that the main motion?
Yes, so the main motion, making the main motion that the superintendent, only this superintendent must live within the district within 90 days from the effective date of employment.
But the cabinet does not have to live in the district?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, that motion passes 9-0. Now we are voting on the alternative motion.
Yes, you made it the main motion, now you're moving to vote, yea or nay?
Yes, so now it's the main motion, and the main motion, the alternate, the main motion is now, we are voting that only the superintendent must live in the, within the district within 90 days from the effective date of employment. Any discussion? Wait, do I have a motion? Do we, we don't need a motion?
You already have that.
Already have that, okay. Any discussion? All right, motion passes 6, with 6 yays, 1 abstain, and 2 nays. All right. We will now move on to items received, removed from consent agenda, that would be action item 8V is going to be approved contract for professional learning support and coaching of Bluebonnet Learning for grades 8 through Algebra 1 Mathematics. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? Trustee Dar, any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 7-2. All right, next consent agenda item 8X. Approve the renewal for the, for the purchase of the curriculum support services package teaks resources subscription through education service center region 11 for the 2025-2026 school year. Do I have a motion? Trustee Phillips, do I have a second? Trustee Lynch, and? Do we have any discussion? We have, and trustee Dar has mentioned she will abstain. Any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 8-1. We are now up to action item B. Consider and take action to approve the hiring of executive director of school leadership. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? See, Jackson, any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. Dr. Molinar, would you like to introduce our new personnel?
Yes, thank you, President Martinez. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Lisa Lovato, she's with us today. She is our new executive director of leadership, she will be overseeing some of our middle schools. Dr. Lovato comes from multiple systems, including Mesquite and Dallas, as well as Cityscape Schools, so thank you for being here and welcome to Fort Worth Independent School District.
All right, we are at action item C. Consider and take action to approve the hiring for executive director of school leadership. Do I have a motion? Trustee, Dr. Ryan, do I have a second? Trustee Phillips, any discussion? Trustee, Dr. Rodriguez? Any other comments or discussion? If not, please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Dr. Molinar, would you like to introduce our new personnel?
Well, this one needs no introduction, to Fort Worth Independent School District, 22-year veteran here with Fort Worth ISD, Ms. Charlotte Dayton, who served as our principal, assistant principal at CC Moss, dynamic leader, and I know you have fans here because I see them out there with their cameras. So let's stand up and welcome Ms. Dayton as our executive director of elementary leadership. Thank you so much. And just, so everyone knows, Ms. Dayton was also our principal of the year last year, so it's a great honor.
Thank you. Next item is action D. Consider and take action to approve the hiring for executive director of strategic communications. Do I have a motion? Okay, trustee Bridges, do I have a second? Jackson, any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 8-1. Dr. Molinar, would you like to introduce our new personnel?
Definitely. We would like to welcome Erin Gregg. Erin comes from Lubbock Independent School District, and will be joining our communications division. Erin, do you have any family here with you today? Okay, well, thank you for, for coming, we're excited to have you join Ms. Tinnan and her team in communications, thank you.
We are now at action item E. Approved selection of delegate in an alternative to the 2025 Texas Association of School Boards Tasby Delegate Assembly meeting on September 13, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I move that trustee Quinton Phillips represent us as our Tasby delegate.
Second, Lubinels? Any discussion? Please move to voting. Oh, we have to do an alternate.
Brother Bridges ride with me as the alternate again. There you go, all right.
Then I move that trustee Quinton Phillips represent us as our primary delegate at the Tasby Delegate Assembly, and that trustee Wallace Bridges serve as the alternate.
And Lubinels, second again? Any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. Action item F. Approve 2025-2026 additional days school year calendar. Do I have a motion? Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? Ryan, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Action item G. Approved proposed termination of certain, we don't have, we don't have, we don't, we do not need action item G or H. We, or I, we are up to, we are up to action item K. Approved revisions to board policy FD local and FM local waiver first reading. Do I have a motion? Jackson, do I have a second? Trustee Phillips, any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. Now we're at L. Approved revisions to board policy FNCE local waiver first reading. Do I have a motion? Jackson, do I have a second? See, Ryan, any discussion? If not, please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Next item is M. Approve revisions to board policy EFB local waiver first reading. Do I have a motion? Trustee Dar, do I have a second? Phillips? Any discussion? Seeing none, please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. We are at item N. Approved budget amendment due to legislative changes under House Bill 2, HB 2. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? Trustee Dar, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. We're at, next item is O. Approved measures of academic progress growth for math, reading, science, and map, reading fluency progress monitoring for 25-26 school year. Do I have a motion? Trustee Phillips and Jackson. Any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Next item P. Approved purchase of assessment coordination. Do I have a motion? Dr. Ryan, do I have a second? Trustee Dar, any discussion? Please move to voting. Next item Q. Approved the 2025-2026 student code of conduct. Do I have a motion? Trustee Lubinels, do I have a second? Trustee Jackson, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee, Dr. Ryan?
The thing I would ask on student code of conduct is that everybody follow what the board policy is. I've been to too many campuses where people would make exceptions. A lot of dress code exemptions because we didn't want to face it. So if we've set the policy out there, my expectation is that all the campuses will follow those policies that we set.
Thank you. Trustee Bridges?
I'm gonna ask that, were there a lot of changes that we've made in, in the student code of conduct that we really, not just say it, but really underline that we get the message out to the community with major changes that could have huge implications with some of our students before the school year starts? So I think it's important among us, once again, that we get the word out with these major changes with the student code of conduct.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. We're at item R. Approve the contract for reading and mathematics digital resource. Do I have a motion? Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? Phillips, any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. Next item S. Approved electricity agreement. Do I have a motion? Dr. Ryan, do I have a second? Trustee Bridges, any discussion? Seeing none, please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. Next item is T. Approved authorization to negotiate and enter into a contract with contractors for turnkey FFNE services for Daggett Middle School and McClung Middle School in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Lubinels, do I have a second? Trustee Dar, any discussion? Seeing none, please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. Next item is U. Approved increase to previously approved architectural services, engineering services, and professional services amount for Riverside Middle School in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Dr. Ryan and trustee Jackson, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. We're at item V. Approved authorization to enter into contracts for job order contracting hazmat abatement services in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? Trustee Phillips, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Next item is W. Approved authorization to enter into contracts for civil engineering services for traffic impact analysis and traffic management plans in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Dr. Ryan, do I have a second? Trustee Phillips, any discussion? Please move to voting. Motion passes 9-0. We are at item X. Approved authorization to enter into contracts for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and test and balance services in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Trustee Dar, do I have a second? Trustee Jackson, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Next item is Y. Approved authorization to negotiate and enter into a contract with the general contractor for Meadowbrook Middle School renovations in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? See, Dr. Ryan, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. We're at next item Z. Approved authorization to enter into contracts for construction materials testing services in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Phillips, do I have a second? Jackson, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. We are at item AA. Approved authorization to enter into contracts for environmental and hazmat consultant services in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Trustee Dar, do I have a second? Phillips, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Next item AB. Approved authorization to enter into contracts for geotechnical engineering services in conjunction with the 2021 capital improvement program. Do I have a motion? Dr. Ryan, do I have a second? Trustee Jackson, any discussion? Please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. Last item is AC. Approved to authorize superintendent to negotiate and enter into contract for alternative shuttle services. Do I have a motion? Lubinels, do I have a second? Trustee Dar, any discussion? Seeing none, please move to voting. 9-0, motion passes. It is, the time is 10:08 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.